Welcome to the second hearing of the Select Committee on Birth Trauma. I'm going to start with a bit of a script that we have to read out. It's just a bit of a formality, so just please bear with us. I acknowledge the traditional custodians of the Darawa country, the lands on which we are meeting today. I pay my respects to elders past, present, and celebrate the diversity of Aboriginal peoples and their ongoing cultures and connections to the lands and waters of New South Wales. I also acknowledge and pay my respects to any Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people joining us here today. Thank you for attending today's hearing. Owing to the nature of this inquiry, I would like to warn those in attendance and listening to this recording that evidence presented today may contain sensitive content or themes. If you feel distressed at as a result of the inquiry's sensitive content and themes, please contact one of the resources available on the committee's website. Today, we'll be hearing from a number of stakeholders, including people with lived experience of birth trauma, advocacy and health organisations, health experts and local hospitals, and health districts from the Illawarra-Sholhaven region. I thank everyone for making the time to give evidence to this important inquiry. Before we commence, I'd like to make some brief comments about the procedures of today's hearing. While parliamentary privilege applies to witnesses giving evidence today, it does not apply to what witnesses say outside of their evidence at the hearing. I therefore urge witnesses to be careful about comments you may make to the media or others after you complete your evidence. Committee hearings are not intended to provide a forum for people to make adverse reflections about others under the protection of parliamentary privilege. In that regard, it is important that witnesses focus on the issues raised by the inquiry terms of reference and avoid naming individuals, hospitals, medical facilities or workplaces unnecessarily. All witnesses have a right to procedural fairness according to the procedural fairness resolution adopted by the House in 2018. Finally, could I ask everyone to turn their mobile phones to silent for the duration of the hearing? I now welcome our first witnesses. Before we begin this session, I remind witnesses to avoid referring to specific names, hospitals or medical facilities in their evidence and to speak generally about the issues raised in the terms of reference. Could I ask each witness, starting from my left, to please state their name and position title and swear either an oath or an affirmation?
My name is Amanda McCallay and I'm here as an individual. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. Ms Bowden?
Hi, my name is Naomi Bowden. I solemnly swear, I solemnly, sincerely and truthfully declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. Ms Holliday?
I'm Jessica Holliday. I'm here as an individual. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. Do any of you have a short opening statement that you'd like to make?
Yes.
I might start in the same order.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks. I'm here today to share the story of my second pregnancy. My family and I have suffered immense trauma from what I believe was inappropriate treatment throughout my second pregnancy. On the 13th of April 2014, my son Connor was stillborn due to a uterine rupture in the week. In the week leading up to this catastrophic event, I presented three times with increasing amounts of abdominal pain at Wollongong Hospital. On my third visit, I was reviewed by a non-duty obstetrician and given Endone. I was told to take the Endone for a few days and come back for my next appointment in five days' time. And even though I was experiencing a lot of pain, my baby was fine. Approximately 36 hours after this medical review and prescription of Endone, I was rushed via intensive care ambulance to Wollongong Hospital. When my son was stillborn, I nearly lost my own life and I required a hysterectomy. I feel there were many issues with the care that I received. I presented multiple times to the hospital and there was no mention or consideration given to me about being admitted or further investigations as to the cause of the severe amount of pain that I was experiencing. I still wonder whether the prescription of Endone may have masked any further symptoms in the hours leading up to the loss of my son. I needed four months off work to recover. I felt broken, both physically and psychologically. A clinical incident review was conducted in July 2014 by staff at Illawarra-Sholhaven Local Health District. However, my husband and I were not informed of this investigation or given any feedback from the process. It was only approximately two and a half years later that I found out that this review was conducted and with my questioning, we were then offered a meeting with the head of obstetrics and a copy of the report. I feel that my concerns in the week leading up to this rupture were not listened to adequately. As a result, my family and I are continuing to live with the trauma associated with losing our son. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, Ms Bowden?
Thank you for having me here today. Sorry. Probably should have went first.
Take your time.
My name is Naomi Bowden and my experience is just one of the many thousands submitted into the birth trauma inquiry. On the 4th of November 2009, I gave birth to my beautiful daughter Bella. It was meant to be one of the most amazing and happy days of my life. The things did not go to plan. Bella was stillborn and the time immediately after her birth holds vivid painful memories, including seeing my baby for the first time after being rudely directed into a small room where she lay lifeless and incubated. Having to call my family in the middle of the night to rush for them to come and see her because we were told that the police were called. Having to identify her body to the police. And being forced... Sorry. And being forced to watch the police officer. Sorry. Put her in a cold styrofoam box. Sorry. And transfer her to the coroner. Being kept in the maternity ward overnight, listening to the sounds of other mothers giving birth and then hearing their babies cry. Why, well, I had just lied. I had just lost and been so... and my baby had been so carelessly taken away. Then going to my six-week check-up appointment with hospital staff and being asked, "Where's your baby?" Because staff had not informed them or even read my files before seeing me. I cried hysterically and I was told, "I'm sorry, you must have fallen through some cracks." And the dismissive cold way that was handled by the HCCC and the hospital. The death of my baby was heartbreaking enough, but it was the disrespectful, the inappropriate, the poorly treatment by numerous staff at this hospital and the complete lack of care in the hours and weeks and months after losing my daughter Bella that exacerbated and compounded and left me with profoundly traumatised. This has impacted my mental health and my overall health and life to this day. My story of Bella, my pregnancy, her birth and all that has come with it over the last three to 13 years is long. It contains so many experiences and so many mixed emotions, but mostly it's confronting and traumatic. To this day, I still hear stories. I meet women, I meet families who have experienced similar things to what we experienced and I know we can do better, we must do better. My recommendations is training in communication and basic care and compassion in every hospital. Policies and procedures to be created around miscarriage, around baby loss, and all staff to be inducted in these areas. A social worker with grief and trauma-based training to be available at every hospital 24/7. Continuing in support after leaving hospital, not being alone, being linked in with appropriate services like PIMS teams, PANDA and local, state, national support groups and emergency contacts, plus more public mother and baby units with perinatal and postnatal. The manner and language in response letters to the families also needs to be reviewed. I understand from a legal perspective, they have to be cautious around wording that they use, but they can still respond with compassion. And most importantly, please don't forget the dads. I'm here today as my daughter gave me a voice. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. And Ms Holliday?
When I first found out I was pregnant, I remember my GP's enthusiasm as she shared in my joy. She was eager for me to embrace GP shared care, an option that she believed in. With her support, I ventured into the antenatal clinic at the hospital, hoping for a positive start. I was weighed and due to my BMI labelled as high risk. The option of shared care was off the table and I found myself subjected to a revolving door of obstetricians. It felt like my worth was reduced to a number on a scale and I was given no other options. Every appointment brought new frustrations. I had to provide a urine sample each time because of my BMI and my high-risk status. The scale became a source of humiliation as I was shamed for any weight gain, even though I was growing a baby. Still, I conked to the belief that I was receiving the best care available despite the confusion that clouded every appointment. At each visit, I shared my story, my journey, only to receive contradictory medical advice. One moment, I was told to take aspirin due to my high BMI fearing blood clots; the next, I was advised it was unnecessary. One day, I was scolded not to gain any weight during pregnancy and the next, I was told that a mother's weight had no impact on pregnancy or birth. I was discouraged from seeking knowledge about childbirth on my own and repeatedly told to trust the hospital implicitly. Despite testing negative for gestational diabetes three times in the first 20 weeks, I was encouraged to act as if I had it. I was warned of a big baby due to my size and advised early induction. The birthing pool was off limits because of my BMI as it was considered a workplace health and safety issue. Midway through my pregnancy, I saw a documentary was playing at the local cinema about childbirth, birth time. I got a ticket, I sat in the cinema, tears streaming down my face. I realised that other women were enduring similar treatment and I could not believe it. Fortunately, I found a glimmer of hope through a local doula during a private birth class. She introduced me to the existence of private midwives in our area. Why had I not been informed of this earlier? I was fortunate to have some savings, allowing me to switch to a private midwife at 30 weeks. Kira, my amazing midwife, evaluated my health holistically and saw beyond my BMI, acknowledging my overall wellbeing. Though I still had some scans at the hospital and I did meet compassionate midwives towards the end of my pregnancy, it was heartbreaking that this was the first time I felt genuinely cared for during my journey, mainly because anything I was told at the hospital, I knew that I could check in with Kira and she would give me research and help me make my own mind up about things happening to my body and my baby. I felt respected and I felt heard. On one of my final hospital visits, I was informed of low mammagic fluid and urged to consult an obstetrician. She warned me of the dangers of a home birth due to my weight, using comparisons that left me distraught. I felt coerced and trapped. I decided to trust my instincts, reaching out to my private midwife for reassurance. She reminded me that she would be monitoring the baby closely during the birth and assured me the obstetrician's claims were unfounded. I followed my gut and one week later, my 3.6-kilogram baby was born at home, fulfilling my dreams of a home birth. My journey was fraught with emotional turmoil, disappointment and frustration. It's essential that we address these systemic issues in our own healthcare system to ensure that no other expectant mothers experience the same distress I did. Thank you for the opportunity to share my story. If you want to know where to from here, we need to listen to birthing people, we need continuity of care, we need more accessible midwifery-based care, we need change. One woman, one midwife.
Thank you. And thank you all for coming today and for your bravery for coming here today. We all really appreciate it, the whole committee, so thank you. So the way that this works now is that any one of the committee members may have a question for you. If you don't feel comfortable answering the question, feel free to tell us that you don't feel comfortable, or if you just need some time or space, let us know and we can come back to you. I might start with my own question and I want each of you to answer. I know some of you have actually covered this partly in your opening statement. But as a committee, we will make a report with recommendations for changes that the government needs to make in this space. And I wanted to understand from you guys what you would actually like to see as some of those recommendations in that report, because obviously your bravery of coming forward today will help us design those recommendations. So I might start from my left again and then just get any thoughts around recommendations and changes that are desperately needed.
It's a tricky one. I thought I was going through a best practice model of care. I was with a midwifery group practice. I had a midwife allocated to me. It was my second pregnancy. She knew me, she understood me and yet I still, as you heard, I presented three times in the lead-up to this catastrophic event and I still felt that I wasn't heard. It was put down as musculoskeletal pain and...
So can I ask, was it more sort of the follow-up and the investigation and like information around the investigation afterwards that you were dropped out of that process?
Yeah, I guess, like, that time is a bit of a blur to me. When I arrived at hospital, I had a Glasgow Chomsky scale of three, which is the lowest anyone can have. And I was intubated, I was in intensive care for a week. I don't even know what's the best... at that point, I was just, yeah, so overcome by grief and, yeah, but more, I guess, information following and being informed of that investigations are done and it's fed back to the family and, yeah, just, yeah.
Thank you.
Sorry, can you repeat the question again?
So the question was, as a committee, we will be putting together a report to the government with a list of recommendations that we suggest that they make changes on. And I wanted to ask what you wanted to see in those recommendations.
So as per my opening statement, I have a list which I can send.
Yes, please.
Yes. As I have 13 years into my grief, I have helped with numerous communities of, what are they called, organisations. I volunteer my time, I go to the baby parent expos and hand out brochures on safe sleeping with still aware, so there's lots of information that I can definitely pass on.
Great, thank you so much.
I think as well as the things that have already been mentioned, I think GPs need to be, like, there needs to be more of a policy around when a patient presents to you with the pregnancy or there's a positive, like, you need to give them all the information. I actually went back to my GP and asked her, "Did you know private midwifery was a thing?" And, you know, she was like, "Oh, we're recommended to encourage hospital." Like, I just don't think, like, why? You know, she's my GP, I guess, that she works for the health district, but, you know, yeah, I think that's a really good place to start. Medicare, have some subsidies for private midwifery care. If you can't get into a... You know, I understand there's a midwifery shortage, so let's make it easier for people to access... I was lucky, I could afford it at the time, but there's lots of women who can't and, you know, it's one woman, one midwife, that's what we want. So if there's a shortage of midwives in hospital care, let's make it more accessible for women to approach private midwives. Yeah, and then obviously, of course, the other things I've said, continuity of care is really important. If you have a high-risk birth, you're immediately not able to even apply for MGP. You see obstetricians, but you don't have the one obstetrician. Like, when I was classed as high-risk, I was actually like, great, now I don't have to pay for an obstetrician, I just get one, obviously, not realising that it meant whoever was on shift is who I'd see for my antenatal care and whoever's on shift is who I'll see when I give birth. It's hard. I never, ever saw the same obstetrician, not once. Even when I asked, "Can I please be put..." I'm like, really, that person was great, they know my story now. No, that's not the way it works. I could just, that just needs to be a change. If I'm high-risk, then why am I being given this so much evidence of continuity of care? Why am I being given, almost in my mind, the worst type of care? No continuity at all. So, yeah.
Thank you. Dr Amanda Con?
Oh, sorry.
You can go first.
Oh, yeah. I was just jumping back on, I guess, more follow-up afterwards, particularly with loss and trauma. At the time, you don't know what you need. I remember being handed a mineral envelope from a social worker who was young and appeared inexperienced and I understand people need to start their health career at some point, but when you get handed that to you when you're in the intensive care unit, it's not particularly meaningful. You don't know what you need at that point and I think to follow up, it needs to be continued, it needs to happen afterwards. I stumbled on a baby loss support group through a random person in the community who told me, "Oh, do you know this exists?" And maybe 18 months after I'd lost my son. I was like, "No, I didn't know that existed. Nobody's ever told me that." It's really hard to advocate for yourself in that point of trauma and my husband was amazing, but he was also going through an extreme amount of grief at that point. He was, he's a shift worker, he wasn't at home at the time where an ambulance was called to our house. My mother-in-law was there. He got called home from work to be directed straight to the hospital where he arrived and was handed his stillborn son and told that my life was uncertain at that point in time. It's, you don't know what you need. You need someone to advocate for you, you need support and for me, that wasn't there.
And I just want to mention too that we do have a local support group in the Illawarra. We have packs ready to go into the hospital and I know, and with the information, with sensitive staff, other services being referred, and I know at one of our last meetings, we are still waiting to get in and have a meeting. It's like we are still not being heard.
Can I ask, when you said still waiting, like how...
Someone to reply to our email to make a time for us to come in.
Yeah, and so you're waiting days, weeks, months?
Oh, months.
Months?
Yeah.
Thank you. Dr Con?
You've already started answering my question.
Yeah.
Which was particularly to you and Amanda and that of me about that process of grief, particularly in those early days in the hospital. Both of your submissions were really heartbreaking and really compelling in terms of your experiences of grief not being handled well at that time. So sort of on that note of recommendations, Amanda, you already talked about that in that postnatal period, how things could be better, but in terms of your time in the hospital, if you can imagine a really compassionate space in future for a future parent who's going through grief, what might that look like? What could hospitals do differently in terms of physical design, in terms of rostering? How can we support people experiencing grief?
Well, Better Births Illawarra, I don't mind. They actually helped the redesign of the new Wollongong Hospital ward and had input from our committee. And I believe that there is a, and I'd have to double-check that this information, about a room available for parents that were presented in, you know, to be moved to. But I'd have to follow that up and give you that information. But I think, you know, every kind of hospital should potentially get one, a soundproofing room or some compassionate room. Because the next hospital that I went and birthed at, I had to have an overnight stay and this was a regional country hospital and they had one.
Sorry, can you repeat again for me?
That's all right. You already half answered my question, so it's about that process of supporting people through grief. And you already talked a little bit about how we can do better in those sort of months postnatal, so I think you didn't need to repeat that. In that sort of acute period when you were in hospital, what might it look like in a more compassionate hospital for a future patient?
I guess, longer-term follow-up, grief definitely goes through phases and, like I mentioned, you don't know what you need and you don't know what exists out there. I remember being given a phone number for an organisation that could come in and take photos for us of my son. But I probably actually needed someone to actually make that phone call for me. I was not, my husband and I, we weren't capable of even picking up a phone and making a phone call for an organisation to come in and take photos for us that, and so we didn't get them. But I guess people to be, I guess, just more awareness and checking in and being there because no one expects to have a stillborn child and nobody knows what to do when they have a stillborn child and people don't know what to say and you feel lost, you feel alone, you leave hospital and you still look pregnant. People ask when you due and it's heartbreaking.
General Sarah Mitchell?
Thanks Chair. I don't really have a question, but I just wanted to say, thank you so much for coming and for being brave enough to tell your stories, particularly Amanda, Naomi and talking about Connor and Bella. I'm sorry, I'm so sorry for your loss and I think it must just be something that no one ever wants to go through, but for what you've been able to do, to come here, to put these in the submissions and to represent many, many other women who've had birth trauma and pregnancy and infant loss, I think it's really important and I think it's something that as a committee, to be honest, we probably haven't looked at those sort of recommendations in the first day of hearings, but I do think that's a really important part of the trauma story that we need to be telling and I just wanted to say thank you for that. And for the recommendations that you do have around how we can improve the system, you know, for what you've been through, to be strong enough to be able to be such advocates, I just, yeah, I just think you're amazing, incredible women and I just wanted that on the record, so thank you.
Thank you. And I think, I haven't looked at statistics recently, but the last I heard was that six babies are stillborn per day across the country. It's, this is not something that doesn't happen. It happens and it's happening every day and it's happening to families every day.
And then we're left to, you know, pick up the pieces and in a way, you know, do it the best way we can, but then there's those layers of trauma that, you know, we're just going to be looked at a bit more respectfully, a little bit more compassion, because I don't know what to expect from grief and trauma, but I can tell you that it never leaves your body. Because my last son that I had, who is now six, my trauma is still quite there alive in my body that I ended up in a mother and baby unit in hospital away from my family in Sydney.
Yes.
You say, and if you don't feel comfortable sharing Naomi, but obviously having had... but obviously having had another child after the experience that you had with Bella, that continuity of care piece, did you have to sort of tell your story multiple times with subsequent pregnancies? Like, how did that work? And could that be better for...
Yeah, I had three subsequent pregnancies after Bella. One of them was a quite difficult loss.
Yep.
I had a Cornwell atopic pregnancy, um, which was very, um, hard to go through. Um, the care that I got in the two other hospitals that I birthed my other... Oh, I didn't really birth that one, but I'm still had, yeah. Um, the care was there.
Yeah.
The care was amazing. I told my story. They went above and beyond to help whatever I needed.
Hmm.
Even public hos- the second public hospital that I went to. Um, it's like they were just listening.
Hmm.
If I, just basic listening, yeah, listening, um, supportive and understanding.
Yeah.
So.
Thank you.
That's okay.
Do the government have any questions? No, that's all.
I don't want to.
Got one. Uh, the honourable Greg Donnelly?
Can I, um, firstly, thank you for coming and, uh, to do what you've done. To be very grateful and up to it in terms of much, I need to take into account. Very much. My question is, and perhaps if we provide each one with an opportunity to answer, starting with Amanda. I presume in the period since the loss of your babies, you've spoken to a, a number of women who've experienced something similar to, to what you've had. You've had a fair statement, you've become aware of others, but there is that. I'm wondering, in your discussions and talk with the women that had the experience of a loss, of a loss of a child, um, is it a, a different experience for them when the, the loss is so close to what would have been the birth? In terms of the, the child well-developed in its life? Um, but it's different as you move backwards towards the, the child being younger? Or is the sense of grief and loss, um, not so much determined by the, the, the age of the child, but other reasons? In other words, is there a different sense of an early loss compared to a later loss? I'm just wondering what women's experiences have been shared with you. So I'll start with Amanda.
I'm not sure I can answer that. I might hand that to Naomi, if that's okay?
Yeah, um, sorry, can you just retouch on some points again?
Yeah, just, just wondering, as women have shared with you the loss, whether they've expressed a different feeling of loss for a child or a baby that was about to be born in, in a late stage of development?
So, sorry, are you comparing like maybe a miscarriage to a stillbirth?
Well, the, the loss, I, I guess what I'm saying is it's a loss. One is a stillbirth and one is a miscarriage. But I'm just wondering for the experience of the woman that lost, is it perceived and felt differently?
I guess that would be up for individual women to...
Right.
Feel, yeah.
Yes. Um, yeah, this is just said, up to the individual, I guess, to feel.
A loss is still a loss.
Yeah.
It's always going to be a loss, so it's just up to how individual women...
How, how they process it.
Yeah, process it, yeah. And I think, you know, yeah, any gestation, in my opinion, should be treated exactly the same.
Yeah.
And I think, I don't wanna cut in Greg, but I think for us as a committee, I think pregnant feeling loss is really hard, no matter what time you're at.
Yeah.
I think the statistics for a miscarriage is one in three women. So there's multiple women in this room who've experienced that. Um, you know...
Have experienced that.
Multiple miscarriages is a huge topic, but I definitely think that a loss is a loss and it really is dependent on how individual women process that. Um, but yeah, I definitely think you still need a lot of support, no matter what gestation.
Yeah, I, I was only making the point because this inquiry specifically looking at birth trauma.
Yeah.
Towards the end of what is that period of gestation and the birth. But I'm just wondering, beyond this inquiry,
Yeah.
uh, is there a, a bigger issue for women that really needs to be thought through?
I can give you just a quick example. So when I presented at my GP with my Cornwell atopic pregnancy, he informed me to call the local hospital in which I birthed my, my daughter out. Their response was, well, what do you want me to do about it? They said, you're under this amount of weeks, you're just gonna have to wait and see. So there's a lot, and he gave me like a direct care line at the time. And I just said, this is the phone number I was told to call. Thank you for wasting my time.
But also, can I just add in as well? When we're talking about birth trauma, it doesn't just mean the birth, because I didn't have a traumatic birth, but my pregnancy was traumatic. Still inclusive into this.
Yeah.
You know, what we're talking about here into the inquiry. So when we're talking about birth trauma, some women are traumatised from their pregnancy. Um, some is the birth.
Yeah.
So it's definitely all meaningful to talk about today and talk about, yeah, in the future. When we're looking at new policies, when we're talking about birth in general, it doesn't just mean the actual birth, it means the pregnancy leading up to the birth as well. So, yeah.
Absolutely. And I think it's in the terms of reference too, that it's before, during and after. So it's that whole birthing experience.
Yeah.
So the honourable Mark Benaziek also had a question?
Thank you. Um, I guess my question is to all of you, but particularly Amanda and Naomi. You spoke about, Naomi, you spoke about the, the H-triple-C, the spirits being pretty abysmal. Um, and Amanda, you spoke about not finding out about a clinical review until two years later. Do you think being involved in that process, that clinical review, and a more, a more compassionate H-triple-C process at the beginning would have lessened the trauma, made it less traumatic? Although it would obviously have been a difficult process, but the fact that you didn't find out two years later, that it was a real problem involved and the H-triple-C was appalling, I'd say. Um, if that would, if that was handled better, do you think that would be a, a good step forward in, in, in helping this, this issue?
Yes. I, I think in my, in my meeting, that all parties involved at the time of my birth and what happened needed to be present.
Yes, definitely. I think, um, being involved in that process and being able to debrief and ask questions, because as I was saying, like, uh, in those really initial stages, you, you don't know what questions to ask, you don't know, um, what's going on. You're so consumed by the immediate grief and trauma. Um, and then, um, I guess as you start your, your healing process and grieving process, questions come up and to be given, um, yeah, the opportunity to ask those questions and potentially ask those questions of people who were there at the time. Um, like in two and a half years, staff change, like staff that, um, I guess, um, that you're meeting with don't have any experience other than reading the report and giving it to you. Um, yeah, but being up to be involved, um, in a more timely manner and being up to ask those questions, um, would definitely help in the process.
Yeah. Answer a lot of, um, unanswered questions and help with the healing.
Um, if, yeah, if, if I, um, hadn't, I guess, um, had, uh, connections within the health service, I don't think I ever would have found out that a report was produced.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. The honourable Susan Carter?
I just wanted to say thank you to each and every one of you. Thank you for being here today. And to assure you that we are listening and you have been heard. And everybody who has made a submission, we are listening and everyone is being heard in this process. And I just wondered if there was anything else, and I know we've covered a lot of ground, if there was maybe one thing perhaps that you thought would, would help your, help your healing?
Start from the other end.
My, what would help my healing is knowing that it will not happen again, that women are going to be treated better, that we will be respected, that we will be heard, that we are given all the options. We're not coerced, we are not, you know, threatened with our baby's lives or, you know, ignored. Um, I think that's the way forward, listen, which, you know, I appreciate this forum for that. But let's actually take steps. I mean, there are so many things that are already out there that show the research states this, but our policies are opposite, you know? Um, so I just think going forward, listening and then actually doing, changing the policies, making those changes, um, it's the most important thing. That's why we're all here.
Um, I guess mine's more around if a stillbirth does occur, we need to do better supporting families.
Hmm.
Um, I put my submission in and I'm here today because I don't want anyone to feel that they're alone. Because, for example, if, you know, Amanda didn't find the group, um, I'll, you know, I get referred to people all the time about, oh, I know this person, they've had a stillbirth. And I, I guess I'm just a big, a person with a big heart that said, let them there, let them know I'm there to hold their hand.
Hmm.
So we need to do better about support leaving hospital. I saw the midwife who did my course, my birth course. She was the only person that came out and saw me.
Hmm.
And then I had to follow up, I had to make the appointments. I got things sent to me that were inappropriate. I didn't, I got handed an envelope. I had, I got given a support worker that had no, no clue how to help me. So that's a huge thing for me, we need that support. Because that, you know, that really can stop ongoing trauma that impacts someone's life.
Hmm.
Yeah, I think, um, listening and learning, um, the idea of another family going through what my family has had to endure, um, breaks my heart. Um, and I guess, um, more conversations and more understanding of, um, what could go wrong and, um... Yeah, people need to be listened to. Like, I felt like I was doing all the right things in my pregnancy. I had increasing amounts of pain, um, and I continued to turn up to the hospital. And I continued to get sent away and told everything was okay without any further investigations, um, as to what was causing, um, my pain.
Well, thank you all for coming here today. And I speak for, for the entire committee to say we really appreciate, um, you giving us your stories. And, I mean, this committee has received over four thousand submissions. The majority of them were individual submissions, um, which really just goes to show the prevalence of birth trauma. Um, so the fact that you're willing to come forward today and advocate on behalf of all of those women really means a lot to every single one of us. So thank you. Um, sorry, was there any last questions?
I was just gonna ask, I know it's not, um, parliamentary process to clap, um, but could we...
Absolutely. Um, we may have some further questions for you. Um, and if we do, um, the secretary will contact you with those questions. Um, and you'll have twenty-one days to answer those questions and the, the secretary will, will be in contact if that's the case. Um, thank you all again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
...
You can't hear me?
Okay.
I'd now like to...
Hello? Hello?
Try now, testing, yeah. Yeah. Does that sound okay? It's still pretty quiet. Can you guys hear me? Oh, that's a bit better. That's better. Thank you. I'd now like to welcome our next witnesses. Uh, we have with us Amy Keating, Olivia Prain and Carly Griffin. Um, we are going to go through the same formalities, so please bear with us. Um, before we begin this session, I remind witnesses to avoid referring to specific names, hospitals or medical facilities in their evidence, and to speak generally about the issues raised in the terms of reference. Um, I'll now ask each witness, starting from my left, um, to please state their name and position and swear either an oath or an affirmation.
All right. My name is Amy Keating. I'm here as an individual. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Hi, I'm Olivia Prain. I'm here as an individual. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Hi, I'm Carly Griffin. I am here as an individual. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. Um, do you each have short opening statements that you'd like to give? I'll start at my left again.
Um, I'm here today to talk about my experience of birthing in August of last year as part of the MGP program. I applied for the MGP program as soon as I found out I was pregnant. I was one of the lucky ones and accepted onto the scheme. I had continuity of care with one known midwife and later in my pregnancy, a student midwife joined my care team. Throughout my pregnancy, my trust in my midwife grew and I was able to discuss all of my wishes and worries without any fear of judgment or dismissal. She answered any questions I had with all the information I needed to make sure I made an informed decision. These were the two midwives present during my labour and at the time of my daughter's birth. After a very fast and intense second stage of labour, my daughter was born unresponsive. She was resuscitated by a crash team of doctors at Wurongong Hospital, sorry, a crash team of doctors. She was immediately taken from the room to NICU. My husband rushed out of the room to be with her, meaning I was left separated from my newborn, my husband and newborn daughter within minutes of her arriving into this world. They were the most distressing and difficult moments of my life. I knew that my daughter was alive, but I didn't know how she was, where she was, or what was happening to her. It was around four hours before I could see my daughter again. Those hours were incredibly difficult, but throughout it all, I was supported and cared for by my two wonderful midwives. A familiar hand to hold and a familiar person explaining to me what was happening made all the difference to my mental state. My daughter was transported to Sydney and spent the next 72 hours in NICU, in NICU there. Thankfully, she improved very quickly and we were able to take her home within five days. As a new mum, I was exhausted physically and emotionally. Our midwife remained in contact with us throughout our stay, checking on the wellbeing of myself, my daughter and my husband, and ensuring we had everything, all the support in place that we needed. My family aren't here, they're overseas, and this helped me so much in a time that could have been so isolating. It was greatly appreciated to know that our support system was still there and will continue to be there when we came home. As part of the MGP program, you get two weeks of home visits from your new midwife. The day after we arrived home, we were visited by our midwife for our first home visit. This was an extremely emotional time for all involved. My husband and I were able to ask all the questions we had about our daughter's birth and debrief in detail what happened, why it happened, with the people that were there on the day. I believe that this helped me greatly with processing the events of my daughter's birth. I'm so grateful that this is something I didn't have to wait for or ask for. I also believe that it helped our midwife. She, she, I know that she too was affected by our daughter's birth, and being able to see her discharged from hospital, thriving in her home environment was extremely beneficial to her after seeing our little family go through such a difficult experience. It feels a little strange sitting here today alongside these brave women to talk about how I don't have birth trauma. Yes, I still struggle with the events of my daughter's birth and always will, but not because of the way I was treated. In fact, the way I was cared for and supported through my pregnancy, birth and early postpartum by a knowledgeable and incredible midwife, safe from further trauma and mental health decline, will be something I'm always grateful for. I truly believe that this should be the standard of care every woman in Australia is entitled to.
Thank you. Ms. Prain?
I'm here today to share my experiences of my two pregnancies and births. My first birth was through a private obstetrician in a private hospital. A slightly low platelet count in my third trimester resulted in an induction at 38 weeks. This led to a cascade of interventions ultimately resulting in an emergency cesarean and a postpartum hemorrhage. Given that I had dreamt of a natural birth, I found myself disappointed and somewhat traumatised by this experience, and I felt that I wasn't adequately educated on the risks of induction. However, my baby was healthy and happy, so I told myself that that was all that mattered at the time. Fast forward 18 months, I was then pregnant with my second baby. I found myself still desperately wanting to experience a natural birth, however knew this would actually be harder to achieve than it was the first time, as I'd now had a prior cesarean. Achieving a vaginal birth after cesarean in Australia is not an easy thing to do. So for this birth, I really did my research on what would give me the best chance of a VBAC. What I found through researching and also through listening to other women's stories was that continuity of care is one of the most important factors. So at six weeks pregnant, I applied for the midwife group practice, or MGP program, and was fairly quickly told I had a spot pending some medical checks. However, two months later, I was whisked out of the program due to my hemorrhage in the first birth. This was obviously distressing for me, as I had felt really safe in the program. I was then faced with the option of seeing a different doctor or midwife for each appointment, where I felt issues could potentially slip through the cracks. Alternatively, I could pay a few thousand dollars to engage a private midwife to do all my antenatal and postnatal care. I went with this option. I felt so well cared for and truly held with my private midwife. She was so incredibly supportive, was available to answer my questions or provide advice at any time of the day or night. My appointments were in the comfort of my home and the focus was on both my physical and emotional wellbeing. I again had a slightly low platelet count, however, through doing my own research and getting great advice from my private midwife and from the OBs at the hospital, this time I wasn't induced as a result of it. As the hospital doesn't allow private midwives to attend births in a midwife capacity, I also engaged the support of a doula so that I had someone in the room with me apart from my husband who knew my birth plan and would help me to achieve that. With a private midwife, doula and public hospital model, I was able to achieve an empowering, healing, intervention-free VBAC. I am privileged to have been able to afford the thousands of dollars for a private midwife and a doula, and as a family, we made the decision to sacrifice other things so we could afford this nurturing care and hopefully avoid physical and emotional birth trauma and unnecessary interventions. However, there are many families that can't afford it and aren't in the approximately 7% of women who successfully get a place in the MGP program. Or like me, they get a place and are later kicked out. It really shouldn't be this hard to have continuity of care with a midwife when the evidence tells us just how successful this model is. I hope that from this inquiry, we have more healthy women and babies. The women have supported pregnancies and empowering births where they have continuity of care, feel that they've been adequately educated, all options have been presented to them, and ultimately their choices have been respected.
Thank you. Ms. Griffin?
One in three women suffer from birth trauma. It could be your mum, your sister or your daughter who suffer at the hands of the New South Wales maternity system. Sorry. Our maternity system is broken, and unless we make improvements, the rate of birth trauma is never going to change. We need more compassionate, supportive and trauma-informed midwives. I want to make it clear that although I mentioned poor treatment by midwives in my submission, I don't think midwives are inherently bad. I believe they are burnt out from unsafe staffing levels. They want to provide us the best care, but they just can't, they don't have the staffing levels all the time to provide us with the care we need, but the care we deserve. We need bigger MGP programs. Midwifery-led care has been proven to be the gold standard throughout the world, and a small step towards improving birth trauma is compassion and empathy from all birthing staff. The OBs I dealt with were cold, dismissive, and that treatment undoubtedly contributed to my trauma. Women feel better supported when there is continuity of care. It gives women the opportunity to form a relationship for nine months and build their trust with their midwife, who will also be with them during labour, which leads to better birth outcomes. There needs to be changes, oh, sorry, I was unable to participate in the MGP program as I was deemed high risk. There needs to be changes made with high-risk patients who don't qualify for the MGP program. High-risk patients should be seeing the same OB at all of our appointments instead of a different doctor every time we're at the clinic. It's hard to build trust when you get a different opinion at every appointment. I was forced out of bed less than eight hours after an emergency C-section. I hadn't even held my own son yet. But I was told that I needed to get up and get in the shower, because if I didn't, in the words of my midwife, "I don't have time to take you to the special care nursery, so get up or you won't be seeing him." Sobbing hysterically with blood running down my legs, while my son's dad did the best he could to help me get cleaned up and help me get dressed with no pain relief or assistance from the midwives is a nightmare I'll never forget. I can only imagine the trauma he also suffered from watching the mother of his child suffer at the hands of the maternity system. I was called a junkie by an OB. I was told by midwives that I was showing drug-seeking behaviour, and I was denied pain relief on more than one occasion, as I was told, "You can't possibly be in that much pain." As you can imagine, these comments are not only hurtful, but they're embarrassing, and I was left to suffer until I was discharged two days later, while also trying to care for my son as a first-time mother. Um, two years later, I still suffer severe PTSD. Just walking through hospital doors causes me panic attacks and I break out in a stress rash. I also suffered from postnatal depression and spent the first six months of my son's life in a dark place mentally, not to mention the ongoing pain I still suffer today. We need to listen to women and believe them when they say something isn't right, not just dismiss them because they don't fit into the textbook narrative of what birth, labour and postpartum recovery should look like. We need to support women in their right to have a birth plan. We should be encouraging women to educate themselves on birth, empower women to know their options and their rights, and we need to do our best to facilitate those preferences. Every woman that goes into labour with a birth plan understands that things change and that we have to adapt as our labour progresses. Our birth, our birth plan should be respected and we should not be told to lower our expectations of labour and birth. Stop dismissing women and trying to shift the blame back on us that our expectations were too high and that's why we have birth trauma. Especially at a time of vulnerability, we deserve respect, a basic human right that many of us were denied during our birthing experience. I went into labour with a plan. I was flexible in my wants and needs as my labour progressed, yet I still suffered birth trauma. Lastly, I'd like to thank the committee for giving us victims a voice and an opportunity to speak and share our stories. I'd like to thank Better Births for not only the support during this inquiry, but also the ongoing work that they do for the birthing community here in the Illawarra. And finally, and most importantly, I'd like to thank the 30 wogga wogga mothers who complained aloud for this inquiry to be held. Thank you for being brave and demanding better for the women of New South Wales. Without you ladies, this inquiry never would have happened. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, and thank you to all of you, and thank you for your bravery in coming forward. Um, as a committee, we really appreciate it and we appreciate your time as well. Um, so what will happen now is that the committee will have, um, some questions. Um, and we'll just sort of throw randomly to different members as they have questions. Um, I'm going to start with the same question that I did in the last session, um, which was that this committee will actually put together a report, um, that will go to the government and to the relevant health minister, um, with recommendations about what actually needs to change in the system. And I know you've covered, um, some of that in each of your opening statements, um, but if I could ask you to sort of, um, let us know what you would actually really like to see in that list of recommendations, um, that you think will either change an experience or where you've had a positive experience, what that needs to be available to, to every single woman. Um, did you want to start, Ms. Griffin?
Um, yeah, I believe that, you know, the MGP program is wonderful and it supports low-risk women, but what about the high-risk women? We are just as important. Why are we seeing a different doctor at every appointment? You get a different opinion, yes, we're going to induce you, no, we're not, we're giving you a C-section. There's a different opinion. We deserve the continuity of care that the MGP program provides. So we need to find some sort of option that we have the same sort of services. We have one OB through our whole pregnancy, not a different OB at every appointment.
And it's interesting because, um, I mean, I remember when I was reading your submission, it just seemed so strange that if somebody's identified as high-risk, why, do, were you ever given any explanation as to?
No. So it, I think basically it's you get whoever's available on the day. But from my experience, the high-risk clinic is run on the same days every week. Why can we not see the same OBs?
Yeah. Ms. Prain?
Um, yeah, I'd really echo that, that, you know, and what the previous group said of one woman, one midwife. Um, we know and the evidence shows that that does result in the best outcomes for mum and baby. Um, and also I had the same experience where they seemed to go out of their way to give you a different OB each time with no apparent explanation. And even when I had asked to see the same OB, they sort of said, "Oh, we don't really do that. We like you to see a whole range of people." And same sort of experience of, "Yes, you can have a water birth. No, you can't have a water birth." "Oh, we don't have a policy on water birth." Like, you're just getting inconsistent explanations every single time you go. And if we don't have the midwives available, um, at the hospital to support a one-woman-one-midwife model, can we look at allowing more private midwives admitting rats into the hospital so that women, if they can't get it through the hospital, can at least pay to then have their midwife there at the hospital for the birth? Um, so I guess what other models are available to support that? Um, in terms of, you know, educating, and again, I guess this is nothing new on what the, the previous group said of, you know, we need to be educated on all our options, all available options, rather than just having a select few options presented to you, um, and then listen to the woman and ultimately you can explain the different risks, but allow them to make the choice on what risk level they are happy to accept. Um, we need to be looking at holistic care. So, you know, you're kind of going for your appointment. I think one of my appointments was about three minutes long in total. So you're just quickly getting scanned, um, and then you're sort of moving on. It would be great if we could be looking more at, um, you know, the woman's emotional state as well. And then, um, in terms of postpartum, you know, you've just birthed a baby, whether it be vaginally or via cesarean, and that's a really big deal. Um, and, you know, there's no sort of physio access available that's publicly funded. I think I did ask in the hospital to see a physio. I was there at the hospital for three days. No physio came the entire time I was there. So for women that can't afford to go out and pay for a physio, they, they really don't have access to one and, and they may be left with lifelong issues as a result of not accessing, accessing a physio in those early days postpartum. Um, also, postpartum care for complications. So once you're, uh, you leave the hospital after your birth, basically if you need to go back to the hospital, if you experience any sort of issues, which I did, the official policy is that you go through emergency. So this could be within a couple of days after giving birth, you're, you're bleeding, you're engorged, you're leaking, you've got your newborn baby with you, and you're expected to just go back through the hospital because you might have left a couple of days ago. So you need to go straight back to emergency. I was fortunate that, at the time that I went, that, um, the birth suite wasn't full and so they did have capacity to see me, but if they were full, I would have been going and waiting in emergency for hours, which is obviously not ideal with a newborn baby. So I guess that also ties into the prenatal care, that up until 20 weeks, um, you're not really considered to be able to go into the birth suite if you have any issues. And again, you're going through emergency. It would be really great to establish clinics in the hospital that allow for women to go prior to that 20 weeks or for postpartum so they're not having to go back through emergency. Um, again, the, the last group mentioned this, that the policy does reflect research. So at the moment, policies seem to be years behind on what the current academic research... So at the moment, policies seem to be years behind on what the current academic research is. So can we be looking at that and revising policies more often? And lastly, I had a wonderful experience with a doula and, you know, that provided so much support for me. Is it possible to look at funding for doulas? And I think some research that I've read is that that, you know, potentially will lower the cost of births because it might lower intervention rates, cesareans, that sort of thing. Can we look at that upfront now?
Thank you.
I mean, Olivia said, so many amazing ideas and opinions there. A couple of ones that I had, even just surrounding postpartum care as well. While my daughter was in NICU, I was allowed to stay at the hospital with her. And one thing that I think is huge is the ratios that midwives deal with on maternity wards. I remember pressing the buzzer. I had a very, very painful cannula in my arm that was causing me immense pain and I couldn't get it out, obviously I couldn't take it out myself. I waited hours, the midwife, and she came rushing in and said, "I'm so sorry. I have nine patients to that, we're understaffed." And it wasn't until she walked out of the door, he went, my husband went, "She doesn't have nine. She has eighteen because she also has a baby every month." That's, you can't expect one woman to take care of eighteen patients. It's insane. And yeah, it was then that I, they're so understaffed and so overworked and that's what's leaving us. Traumatized, they're not getting the care that they need. I think, again, going back to postpartum services regarding physio and gynaecology, those kind of things. I was, I unfortunately had to get stitches after my birth and as the OB was stitching me up, she was reeling off all these appointments that I would need. You need this, you need this, you need this in so many weeks. I wasn't there in that room. My head was with my daughter where, of course it was, and I left and that was that. I tried to call the hospital to make a gynaecology appointment. I was told I had to be seen at six weeks postpartum. I couldn't get an appointment with gynaecology until my daughter was three and a half months old. Again, I was lucky that I was in a position to be able to pay for my own physiotherapy so that I didn't suffer the consequences and didn't suffer from prolapse and all those things that women do end up suffering from because they can't get that care. This one does go back to the previous session and what the girls had to say just regarding loss. I myself suffered a miscarriage before the birth of my daughter. I remember presenting to the early pregnancy unit and as soon as the lift opened in the hospital, there was a big sign in front of me that said birthing suite. Why is the early pregnancy unit on the same floor as the birthing suite? Why do you have to present? Again, it goes back to why is there not safe spaces for women that have experienced loss? It doesn't make sense to me that, you know, I was going there, losing my baby at that moment in time and that's the first thing that I saw. So I think we definitely need to do more surrounding loss and have more support for women and a safe space for them in the hospital. And yeah, again, I echo the continuity of care. It's huge. It made all the difference to me. I think if anything, those postpartum visits were the main for me. My midwife knew me by then, she knew. Even, I remember one day postpartum, she called me for, I think my daughter was maybe a week old. She called me to check that we'd got the right forms from the hospital and she could just hear in my voice that I wasn't okay. She turned up at the door two hours later for a home visit to check in on me. Because, and I needed that. And I think without that, like I said, my mental health would have greatly declined. But it was, it was greatly appreciated to have that support from her.
Thank you. Just looking at any committee, Dr Mandakam?
I have two questions. My first question is for Carly. In your submission, you talked about being on the ward post-operatively and that your son was there with you but wasn't considered a patient. So the nurses weren't able to help care for him when you weren't able to care for him because you had had a complication from surgery. The reason I'm asking about this is that we've already heard from the New South Wales Nurses and Midwives Association through this inquiry and they've drawn a lot of attention to the issues with the staffing model. It's called birth rate plus and as Amy alluded to, it doesn't count babies as patients under the staffing model and they've been advocating for that to change. So my question to you is what difference would it have made to your experience for that nurse to have been rostered in a way that allowed them to care for your son?
Well, all the difference. I didn't even see my son for ten hours after he was born. I was able to touch him through an incubator, that was it. I was discharged from the hospital two days later and then two days after that, I was put back in the hospital due to a surgical complication. I had to leave my son at home. I spent a week in hospital by myself without my son. It was the middle of a COVID lockdown, so I also didn't want him to be brought up to the hospital for visits because I didn't want to risk his health. He was born at 36 weeks, so he was born a bit early. It would have made all the difference. My milk didn't even come in because I didn't have enough contact with my own son. So it would have made all the difference to have a staff member available to help with the care of my son. But even before that, when I was on the ward before I was discharged, I mentioned that my son was just brought to me from the special care nursery. He was left beside me and the nurse walked out. I could barely sit up in bed, let alone feed my child. I was offered no support for breastfeeding. I was given formula and told, "Here you go. Call us if you need us." What is that? You know, and it isn't all their fault because they don't have the staff. We need more staff.
Thank you. And then my second question, if it's all right through your chair. Both Olivia and Amy, you talked about the value of having had some appointments at home. I think Olivia, you mentioned antenatal appointments at home and Amy, you mentioned postnatal appointments at home. That's obviously not something that's part of sort of standard maternity care in New South Wales and I was hoping you could elaborate on what sort of difference that made or the specific experience of having had some of those appointments at home rather than having to come into hospital?
As I say, my local postnatal appointments, it is part of the MGP programme at our local hospitals. You do get two weeks of home visits as part of that. It made all the difference. Like I say, for my mental health, it meant that in those, the very first day, well, the next day after we'd arrived home, like I said, I was able to instantly debrief and instantly talk and go through everything with my midwife that was there. When my daughter was born, she knew exactly what we'd been through. I didn't have to repeat my story. She was there, she knew what we'd been through. And I guess, yeah, you're in a postpartum cloud. The thought of having, you know, pack yourself and your baby up and go to the hospital for appointments or go to the GP for appointments is, it's just not on your radar. You should be in your little love bubble enjoying it and the care should come to you. Like I said, again, and I truly believe and I do know that my midwife was also affected by my birth. It was obviously quite distressing for her too to go through that and I know that she walked through the door at that first appointment and the first thing she did was put her arms out to hold my daughter and held her so close and was just so grateful and thankful that she could do that. And I think the fact that it came full circle for her helped her as well to be able to see my daughter as well and she was thriving and she was okay. Because at the end of the day, she'd been with you through my whole pregnancy too. That's how continuity of care works. You build a relationship with that person. But yeah, I think it makes all the difference in those early days where, and you're going through so much hormonal change too that, everyone had told me about it, but you don't know it until you live it. Those first few days of the hormones changing and everything that you're going through. I genuinely was very concerned for my mental health and so was my husband for a little while there. But to have that support and know that I could pick up the phone and call her and like I say, she knew straight away that something was wrong and turned up at the door to check in with me and the support was there when I needed it. So it made all the difference.
Yeah, I found the at-home visits amazing and the care that I got through the private midwife in my second pregnancy versus my first with the obstetrician is really incomparable. I also have a two-year-old at home and so, you know, I don't know if everyone's aware that the antenatal clinic at the hospital don't allow children to come and so you need to find someone to look after your child so that you can go to your doctor's appointment. So having the appointments at home meant that I didn't need to worry about childcare and also just from a personal perspective, it involved my son in the pregnancy too, which, you know, is really nice for transitioning to two kids and he still talks to me about hearing the baby's heartbeat and, you know, sweet things like that. But it was amazing in the antenatal period, it was so nice. And then, you know, as Amy said, in the postnatal period, it was so great to not have to leave your house. Having a private midwife, I had weekly appointments, which again was a really big difference to my first pregnancy where you go in for a quick 15-minute check six weeks postpartum is what I had with the OB initially. So yeah, I just think if we can do it, if there's any way we can do it, it really is the gold standard of care.
If I may just go back to the previous question about improving care as well. Actually, Olivia just reminded me, the six-week GP check needs to be better. I remember walking in, after everything I'd been through, I walked into my six-week GP check. They weighed my daughter, they gave her injections and the GP came in and said, "How are you?" And I was like, "I think I'm okay." "What contrapositive do you want?" "Oh, I hadn't really thought about that." "Okay, end of conversation." That was my six-week appointment. That's not good enough. After, you know, I had a tear that hadn't healed, I had all of these things. I should have been provided with, "Here, this is how you access a physio. Here, this is how you access the mental health support if you need it. Here's this blood test, anything to be done that, you know, that's actually checking on your health" instead of just a tick the box, wait down.
I also, sorry, just to interrupt, I'd like to add to that that, me for example, I had postpartum, I had post-surgical complications. My son is two in two weeks and I've only just received an appointment with the gynaecology department at the hospital. I'm sorry, but why have I waited two years for them to see me? Women that give birth via cesarean and have complications, we should be put higher on a waiting list. I shouldn't have had to wait two years just to get a single 20-minute appointment.
Yeah. I'm sorry, Damaal Mark Benazir, did you have a question?
No, thank you.
Thanks Chair. Thank you all for coming in, for sharing and also coming with real practical things that the committee can look at as well. I think that's really important. I think for me, one of the consistencies that we're hearing from witnesses but also from the submissions is just that continuity of care model. And, you know, I guess as women and mums, we all have our own experiences, but I think the thing that shines through is if people have had that consistent care from someone who they trust, that's really important. And I think we've really got to look at how we can make that more achievable for women everywhere. I mean, I live in a regional community, so it's a bit different for us, but I think that messaging is really important. I wanted to talk a little bit about, I guess, the information that you get particularly pre-giving birth and it's something that the committee's kind of chatted about offline and the need to have, I guess, more informed decisions and chance to really consider what might happen for your individual pregnancy. And I think that's where that consistency of care is important. But, you know, you've all talked about it in different ways in your submissions and in your evidence. One of the things that I guess I'm mulling over is, is there a way to have better, you know, one-on-one time, I know a lot of people do the sort of antenatal classes, but to really have a longer appointment or something that is actually scheduled through Medicare that you have time to sit down and go, whether it's with your midwife or your GP or your obstetrician or whoever it is that you're seeing for your pregnancy, to really talk you through what may happen, just so you're making informed decisions rather than being in the moment of what you're going through. Do you have any thoughts about how we could do that side of things a little bit better? Because as you said, some, I mean, and some people get that. Some people get great relationships and, but others, I think you mentioned someone before, like a five-minute appointment where you come in and out and that's not a quality time. Any thoughts on how we could sort of make recommendations around improving that process? I know it's a bit of a long-winded question, so I apologize, but...
I guess for me, I feel like I kind of got that because I had the continuity of care with one midwife. It meant that she was obviously the midwife of all of my appointments. And I remember about halfway through my pregnancy, she did say to me, she said, "Okay, it's time to start thinking about what you want, like what your birth wishes are, what your birth..." She said, "We don't have a plan because we always have birth wishes." And she gave me that space. She invited, she said, "I would like you to bring your husband to your next appointment if he's going to be your support person and we're going to sit and we're going to discuss it and we're going to talk about your wishes and your wants and I'm going to do everything I can to make sure that you get those." So I guess for me, I did get that and maybe with continuity of care, I'm sure you did with your private midwife too, get that conversation. With continuity of care, that might just naturally happen. But yeah, I do think it needs to be a longer appointment than 20 minutes, which in my case I got. Yeah, I guess it's definitely something, yeah, I think that... But the problem is, I suppose, that if there's not then that continuity of care, you do have that conversation with someone, is it just going to get put in your notes somewhere and completely forgotten about by the time you get to your birth? Because it's not then being continued by the same person.
I mean, it does all come back to that continuity.
Yeah, yeah.
I think even as I, because I obviously went through the high-risk programme, there's not enough midwives. Like, they would love to sit down and chat with you, they don't have the time. So I think staffing numbers, as we've all mentioned, if we can get more midwives and we can retain these midwives, they will have more time to provide that care. They just don't have it at the moment.
Yeah, I was really fortunate in having a private midwife and a doula where, you know, we went through in depth what my birth plan was. I guess the only thing that was up in the air was, it was kind of like, "Oh, it'll be a luck of the draw on who you have on the day, whether you can have a water birth or whether you can do that because policies aren't necessarily clear." And if you have some risk factors, like mine was a VBAC, so there are certain risk factors. So some midwives and OBs will be comfortable with a certain level of risk and others will not. And so you kind of come up with, "Oh, this is Plan A, this is Plan B. Oh, if I can use this, that'd be great. If I get this room, that'd be great because also not every room has a birth pool. So don't get your heart set on a water birth because you might get checked in the other room." So yeah, I guess, you know, we do make the birth plans to be flexible, but at the same time, I guess there's not enough clarity on what's possible, what the policy is and yeah, it's down to different people's level of risk.
Can I say to you, Olivia, too, your point about being able to access postpartum care and not have to go through a, like, that is such a simple but effective solution that should be implemented. It's a personal experience that made me go, that would have been really handy.
Yeah, it seems crazy to be like, "Oh, sorry, I was here two days ago. Now you want me to go through emergency with all of the people with different illnesses as well and I'm bringing my newborn baby in there? That makes me really anxious."
Yeah, thank you. That's a really good recommendation.
Sorry, I have Susan Carter.
Thank you Chair. I have one question really directed primarily to Ms Pram, but happy for anybody else. Could you help us understand the different roles played by a doula and a midwife?
Yes. So obviously a midwife is there for your clinical care and, you know, they are a medical person. A doula is there really to support you and your partner and support your birth plan. And I don't know if anyone wants to chime in, but I think a doula is there to support you and your birth wishes. They're not a medical person, they're not there to provide medical advice. They will help to advocate for you or in moments, maybe when you're struggling to remind you of what your birth wishes are and to help you to sort of have the courage to advocate for yourself or to have your partner to advocate for you. I think they're really there to support you and your whole family. My amazing doula, you know, would bring meals over postpartum or when I provided a massage or something like that, that's really looking after you as the whole person and, you know, your different emotional, physical, more emotional needs, whereas a midwife will look after more of your medical requirements.
And so the doula can come into the birth room as a support person as opposed to the private midwife who is a medical person?
Correct. But I would also recommend that in addition to allowing private midwives more admitting access to birth spaces, the duelers at the moment, my understanding is they count as a support person when really they should be counted as a birth worker and not go towards the support people count. So for example, I had my husband there and my doula. It would have been nice to have my sister there as well, but I already had my two support people.
I've just got one extra question actually for Ms Griffin, if that's okay. When I was reading your submission, you, and I think in your intro statement, you talked about... talked about that you had a birth plan, and that you were flexible to that changing. And in your submission, you were told, you said that you were told that you had to go into an emergency C-section, but then everyone went to dinner and they said that they would come back to you.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
I shouldn't laugh, it's not funny at all.
I think, yeah, it's just shocking. We've done one session with a whole lot of advocacy groups, and we spoke to different people earlier this week, and there was this real sort of grey space, where it was unsure whether the C-section was a genuine emergency C-section, or whether it was something else. Was it ever really explained to you why it was an emergency, or did you feel that?
No, there was no explanation to me, or to my son's dad, who was at my birth. All I was told, "I got to 10 centimetres, I was ready to push." "I had a midwife come in and examine me and say, 'Great, okay, like, we're ready to go.'" And then the OB came in, did an examination, and said, "No, we're going for a C-section, this is an emergency, your baby's in distress, but I'm just going to go for dinner first before I take you up." "My son was born with perfect APGAS scores, I don't believe he was in distress at all. I don't want to assume, but I feel that they wanted my birthing room." "And I had been in there for so long, and there were so many women in labour, that they needed to get me out as fast as possible." That's what I believe. I wasn't given, I wasn't shown the CTG tracing, I wasn't, I wasn't given any evidence. And further to that as well, I couldn't really give informed consent, because I wasn't explained how a C-section works, what it involves, who will be in the room. All I did was sign a form to agree for blood product. That's it. They went for dinner, they came back, next thing I know, we're in surgery. So, yeah, I don't believe that... I feel like I would have been, I feel like maybe I wouldn't have as much trauma if I knew 100% that that C-section saved my baby's life. And I don't think it had any effect on him at all, so, yeah.
Sorry, so you, I just wanted to check, you were induced.
Mm-hmm.
So what time did that start, and what time did you have your son? Like, how?
So I was induced on the Tuesday afternoon, my son was born on Thursday morning.
Yeah, wow, okay.
Yeah. So when the induction was started, I was just put back on the maternity ward to hang out for a while. I was told I'd go to birthing at 6:00 AM. I didn't go to birthing unit until 3:00 PM the next afternoon.
Okay.
So from 3:00 PM, my son was born at 2:00 AM the next morning.
Yeah, okay. But that was sort of your second day in hospital?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Sorry.
No, no, that's...
Just wanted the timeline.
Yeah, no, thank you. Thank you all for attending today, too. Oh, sure, sorry.
Thanks all for coming along, and particularly valuable contributions of our ideas that we can take away. I think there's a lot of rich information there that we'll deliberate over. My question goes as a matter of the emergency C-sections, the one point we've just been discussing. And I'm wondering this, that it's probably the case that there will be instances of an emergency cesarean section, neat from time to time, with respect to the birthing of a child. And from the evidence that's been given, and I've heard this evidence before as well, a particular form of disappointment for the woman who was wanting to have a vaginal birth, particularly if they had a C-section in the first instance. My question is, what do you think could be done better to deal with this resolution after the birth, in those circumstances, of that disappointment? In other words, the expectation, in fact, what had been planned from the very start, but then there is this intervention, a radical intervention, to have the child born by C-section. How can that be managed better in terms of dealing with that disappointment, which can't be changed because the child was born that way, but at least some attempt to resolve the disappointment associated with it?
Well, I think emergency C-sections should be exactly that, emergencies. They shouldn't be because you need the rooms, or, you know, there's no one available to, you know, in the birthing unit, whatever it is. Emergency C-sections should be only emergencies. I think that would help, because for me, I'm sitting here two years later, still suffering from post-op problems, physical and mental, when we don't even know if I really needed that C-section. So maybe a good start is making sure that if it's an emergency C-section, that it truly is an emergency.
Well, that's a judgment that takes place, isn't inside hospitals all the time. But my question is, in the circumstances where there is the emergency C-section, and that's explained to the woman, that that's the intervention, and she, like yourself, might have doubts and certainly great disappointments. If it has happened, can that period immediately after the birth be better managed in an explanation to try and provide some reconciliation that there's been this big disappointment?
So I personally found comfort in my six-week checkup with my obstetrician after my first birth.
Sorry, I couldn't hear that?
So I personally found comfort in my six-week checkup with my private obstetrician after my first birth, in her saying, you know, "Your next birth, there's no reason why you can't have a vaginal birth." So I guess laying that out at the start, that there wasn't anything, you know, fundamentally wrong there, it was, my baby was in distress. But I think as a whole, Australia could go a lot further in being more VBAC-friendly, so vaginal birth after cesarean. I think the stats in Australia, my understanding is Australia, women who achieve a successful VBAC is about 12%. This is in comparison to countries like Finland and the Netherlands, that have stats of around 50%. So what are we doing differently here that is not supporting women to have vaginal births after cesarean? What can we change? Because I think if you, you know, you had that chat at six weeks after that initial cesarean, and you said, you know, "There's no reason why you can't," 50% of women who try do, I think that's a lot more optimistic than 12%.
I also think as well, sorry, to, further to your question, for me, I think maybe a psychologist should have came around to my room and just checked in and said, "Are you okay? Is there anything we can do for you?" A debriefing with a psychologist in the hospital should be available to women immediately after things like emergency C-section losses, as the woman mentioned earlier. Psychologists should be offered in the first instance.
And then I'd just add to that, after my first birth, I did have a psychologist come around, but I guess you're still kind of in shock, and they're going, "Oh, let's debrief about your birth," and you're like, "I'm just trying to feed my child."
Was that very soon after the birth, or was that immediately after?
Um, no, I think it was a day or two after. But I think you kind of need, yeah, in addition to that, a few weeks, a few months to really process that. It doesn't necessarily happen in those first few days in hospital, when you're kind of physically and emotionally still in shock.
Yeah, agreed.
I think that's just, I think that's something that just, just holding the space for a woman's feelings after her birth is huge. Just having that space available to her to be able to, to talk through it, and, you know, let her cry it out, or explain how she feels, or all of those things. I mean, I haven't experienced an emergency C-section, I can't talk on behalf of them, but I can say that just holding space for a woman's feelings after birth is huge, and makes all the difference. So having someone like a psychologist, a social worker, someone that you can check in with, available to you 24/7, would make all the difference. I think can help women process and understand what happened a little bit more.
Agreed.
I think it's very helpful, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for attending, and thank you for sharing your stories, and they will go towards helping us build some recommendations for this report. Thank you so much for your bravery in coming forward as well. Some of the committee members may have some follow-up questions, and we've resolved that the secretary will contact you, and you'll have 21 days to answer any of those questions. Thank you again. I think another round of applause is welcome.
I now welcome our next witnesses. We have Ms Alissa Booth and Ms Sharon Settacase, both here from Better Birth Ilawara. Thank you both for joining us. Before we begin this session, I remind witnesses to avoid referring to specific names, hospitals or medical facilities in their evidence and to speak generally about the issues raised in the terms of reference. Could I ask each witness, starting from my left, to please state their name and position title and swear either an oath or an affirmation, please?
So I'm Sharon Settacase and I'm a co-founder of Better Birth Ilawara and I'm representing that organisation today. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. Ms Booth?
I'm Alissa Booth, I'm the secretary of Better Birth Ilawara and I'm here today representing that organisation and I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. So help me God.
Thank you. Would either of you like to start by making a short opening statement of a few minutes?
Sure. Before I do that...
Before I do that, I just want to really acknowledge and thank the women who bravely and generously shared this morning. And I also want to thank the Select Committee for the space that's been provided. This is a once in a lifetime for us and it's been a long time coming. So thank you for the opportunity. So I thought I'd start with just my birth story very quickly. So I am the mother of two and both of my births were cesarean births. One was in the public system and I transferred from the Illawarra up to Sydney because of a breach presentation. And my second birth was a planned home birth and I also transferred to the local hospital and birth via cesarean. They were both very powerful, very gentle experiences. Alissa's births, and I have permission around this, two, one in the hospital with an induction. Her second birth was, and oh, you've got three kids. Second and third births were through a private midwife, home births. And our other two core executive members, a public MGP for both births and the publicly funded home birth. And the fourth member had a very traumatic cesarean birth at the local hospital. And her second birth was incredibly empowering vaginal birth after cesarean, otherwise known as a VBAC. And the reason why I share this is just to be really transparent that we're not about which mode of birth is the most important. We have quite a diverse experience and spectrum and that's how we work. So in terms of our organisation, where, I'll keep this really brief so we can go straight to questions. So we're a not-for-profit organisation. We're volunteer-run and we always have been. We are embedded in the community. So we live within the Illawarra, Darawarra country. And I think it's important to note as well that we don't receive any funding. We've never received a grant in all of the consultations and consumer engagement that we've done with the local health district. We've never been remunerated for the hundreds of hours that we've provided our service in terms of our community. And also, the other thing that's really important is we started because our experiences really raised some flags with us around different models of care and how that manifests in how women birth and how they feel and the mental health and physical health of mother and baby.
Thank you. I'm looking to committee members who want to start questions. The Honourable Sarah Mitchell?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you both of you for coming today and for the work that you do. I think you've got quite a support group here, which I think is testament to what you do in your community. So I just wanted to say thank you for that. I wanted to ask you particularly about the part of your submission where you spoke about women who've been through cesarean, not having their baby with them afterwards and talking about that separation. I mean, obviously there's a lot of things we're looking at as a committee, but I thought that particular part of your submission was really interesting in terms of women not being able to have that sort of skin-to-skin contact and the impact that it had on them and on their babies. And I know that it's going to be very general, but I guess if you could elaborate on that a little bit more, like what are some of the problems within the current system that make that not as available to women as it should be? Is it hospital policies and procedures? What could we be looking at recommending as a committee in terms of improving that particular part of, I guess, postpartum care?
Great, thank you for that question. And this is really important because of the alarmingly high rates of cesarean section, not just within our local health district, but across New South Wales, well above the World Health Organisation recommendations of 13 to 15%. Ours is closer to 40%. So it's a really important question. And I can give this research later through an email, but it's very well known that the golden hour or the first hour after birth is absolutely essential for a whole range of reasons. And that, what we noticed was that wasn't happening. So I think it's also just to say why. Why did we start looking at skin-to-skin when our primary goal is to expand the MGP based on what we were hearing? We started looking at this because community was coming to us and saying, "I've been separated from my baby and I was separated for six hours and I have trauma as a result of that. I've been unable to breastfeed." So what we did was we, almost reluctantly, like we're like, "Hold on a second, we're focusing on MGP," but that's what the community was asking us to look at. So we just put a question out, a survey out to our community via social media, just to test the water. Is this happening everywhere? Is this a pattern? What's going on? And usually, we would get maybe 10 to 12 likes or something on our posts and within 24 hours, we received 100 responses. And by the end of the week, there were 200 responses to that question. So we knew that it was an issue. So can you remind me of the question?
Oh, just, I guess just in terms of what, you know, obviously it's something that many women have had that experience and felt that it was not ideally what they would have liked. Where do you think some of the challenges are? Is it hospital policies and procedures? Is it individual decisions that are made? Like where is it sort of, where are the gaps that are?
Sure. There's a skin-to-skin policy.
Yeah, okay.
And I imagine that a lot of local health districts would have skin-to-skin policies because that's an evidence-based piece of work. So the policy and the practice were disconnected. There was, what we found out and we've got all of the stats in there from our, and look, we're not pretending that it's a research piece. This is just a question that was given to our community and we don't have the funding to explore that further. But certainly, the disconnection between the policy and practice was very clear. What we were being told was, you know, while the mother was being stitched up, so from her cesarean section, rather than having the baby put straight on her, the baby was taken away, measured, wiped down and given to the birthing support person or a midwife while the woman went up to recovery. And the reasons were given was that there was no midwife up in recovery. It was just a nurse, like a general nurse. So there was too much of a risk, too much risk to the baby, just in case the baby, the mother may have been a bit out of it and rolled on the baby. These were some of the reasons that were given. But that policy, so rather than looking at it creatively and saying, "Well, why can't the dad go up with the mother up to the," you know, pretty simple solution. "Oh, no, no, he's not qualified to do that." What the senior execs weren't looking at was the incredible trauma that that was causing, separating a mother from her baby for no reason. The baby wasn't necessarily going to NICU. It was just a policy-practice breakdown and staffing, not the right staff. So this is a really interesting case study because we got some traction. And what we did was we then held a community meeting and we invited the senior execs from the hospital. And the community was able, just like we saw this morning, talk directly, which is what we do, we facilitate these meetings. And as a result of that, they funded a cesarean section midwife from, I think it was like 7am till 4pm so that they could go, that was the solution. Now there's a midwife going up to the recovery with the baby and having that expertise. We don't know if that's still happening, we're not sure. And there was a blanket, "No, the father or the birth, you know, the birth partner would not be able to go up with the mother to recovery." So all of these women missing out and birthing parents missing out on that vital skin-to-skin. And there's a local psychologist, Alicia Fummeli, who's currently looking at birth trauma and how that impacts mother-infant bonding. So those first crucial hours and some of, just having a look here, some of the women, the parents were being separated for up to, and we heard stories this morning about separation for 12 hours, eight hours, not knowing, very little communication about what's, "How's my baby?" And that's really important for breastfeeding those first few hours as well.
I think, did you do it? You don't?
Oh, the only thing that I would add to that was one of the consistent feedback was when we floated the idea, "Well, okay, we don't necessarily want baby on mum, maybe dad and baby can go up together or birthing partner," but then they were told, "No." But then they would go to maternity unit, birthing partner and baby and could not see a midwife for hours. So they were like, "Well, how come in this unit I'm allowed to be in charge of my baby? But next to mum in recovery unit, I'm not qualified to look after my baby?" And we had no answers for that. So that was one of the stories we passed on as well.
And I think that's useful for us as a committee because particularly if you look at sort of suggesting policy change for health districts. I mean, if a skin-to-skin policy exists, but in practice, that's not what families are experiencing or if you've got differing rules in different parts of the hospital, I think that's something that we'll have to be quite conscious of as well. Can I just ask one more, Chair? If that's good. I just also wanted to ask about one of your recommendations of having either a midwife, an enrolleur or a student midwife rostered on the recovery ward each day. And I thought that was interesting because obviously we've heard a lot about the workforce pressures, particularly for midwives. And, you know, we have to be realistic about the fact that that will take some time presumably to help build up a workforce. But the idea of having students or enrolled nurses in there, I guess, and using that skill set, I guess just sort of how did you come up with that as a recommendation? Is it sort of better to have someone than no one? Or, and do you think that's something that we could be looking at recommending as well?
I think that we were so desperate to keep mothers and babies together that we needed to find a solution. And this is the way we work. We wanted to provide some options out there. So what we didn't want to see happen was mothers and babies being separated. So what are the other options? We're hearing all the time that there's a midwife shortage. So a fully qualified midwife may not be available. So what else? We are not prepared to receive that as an answer to, like as a response to this. It's a crisis in a sense because of the high cesarean rate. Yeah, and we would actually love to understand across other local health districts, what are they doing that's working? You know, are they allowing birth support partners up in recovery with the birthing parent or what's going on? We don't have the resources to research that, but we'd love to know more around that. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. The Honourable Emily Saffar.
Thanks, Chair. Thanks so much to both of you for coming to give evidence today and for all the work that you do in the community in your own time. It's a very important topic and I'm so glad to hear you talking about skin-to-skin, which is something that we know now, there is established evidence base for the reasons why that is so important. I just wanted to quickly ask, on, you know, the work that you've done and, you know, this disconnect that you sort of found between the policy and the practice that has been occurring, how are you currently working with, if you are indeed working with the local health district about, you know, things like this? And do you foresee a role for you to work together more closely, whether it's now or into the future?
Yeah, I'm going to take this one. We've been around for seven years. So we formed in 2016 and we connected with the local health district very early on because our, what underpins our work is collaborative alliance, solution-focused solutions. And, you know, that improving maternity care, everyone has to be responsible and involved with that. So we have been meeting with our local health district for seven years. We started pretty fresh. We made some mistakes. We did things like, "We're annoyed at this, let's go to the media." Not a good idea. You know, like we hadn't done this before. And, you know, that's, it's not a lever we like to pull. So we learnt from our mistakes. We got help from other people in our community who are really good at negotiating. And so we were skilling up ourselves around how to work with the local health district. So we can track hundreds of hours of our engagement and we can safely say that we've received pretty much the same response every time that we meet. So it feels like a bit of a Groundhog Day, if I'm completely honest and transparent. So for example, with our core, and I'll use this as an example, with our core primary goal of expanding the MGP, we've been trying to do that for seven years and nothing's changed at all. If anything, we have the belief that it's actually eroded since we began. So just to go through and I can give you this submission. So in 2017, we had a 30 midwife shortage and the LHD was in crisis mode. And it was made abundantly clear that expanding the MGP was just not going to happen. There just simply weren't enough midwives to fill the roles. And then we were told that there were no midwives who wanted to work in the model. So midwives were, you know, they were parents themselves and, you know, we don't want to be called out. So what we did was we were part of a committee called Project 2020 and we suggested, "Well, when you're doing your advertising for midwives to come to the hospital, maybe you could do some targeted advertising for MGP midwives. Let's just see if that'll work." And it did, it worked and there was great interest. So we were like, "Great, that works, so fantastic." And then Birthrate Plus happened. And when Birthrate Plus happened, like the numbers hadn't been released and that stalled things again. So there was no budget for midwives, MGP midwives. And then the next excuse was that the current MGP, so we're lucky really, there's five LHDs that have MGP publicly funded, Midwery-led continuity of care and we're one of them. We really acknowledge that. But the next excuse was that the two existing teams were running in different ways. And in terms of client load management, you know, that wasn't a good thing. And we connected, so again, we're trying really hard, "Okay, so what can we do?" We connected the local health district with academics to see if we could commission a report to work out, "How do we solve this problem? How do we make the MGP a sustainable model where midwives want to work there and where women and birthing parents and families get really good quality care?" And what came out of that was recommendations. We have eight recommendations and not one of them have been implemented. And that report was commissioned, I think, in 2018. So that's five years ago. So I just, I share that because that's an example of what it's like to engage and, you know, the reminder that we're volunteers, we have other professional lives, we have families and we do this because we really care about birth. And we can see the trauma in our communities, we hear the trauma that happens in our communities and we're not going to stand around and not do something about it. So it's actually been quite exhausting. It's been extremely challenging working with the local health district and we are really committed to partnering in that way. It's, you know, collaboration's the only way forward.
Excuse me, I just wanted to, further to that, you talked about the MGP's and the role of MGP's and also, you know, some of the issues that were raised in terms of staffing. Are you aware of this alternate model? We heard evidence on Monday from New South Wales Health about the MAPS model. Is that something that you're aware of?
Very much so. We noted that on Monday, that, I think, was it Deb Wilcox, the Deputy Secretary of, yeah. We don't concur with that. We are a group that follows the evidence and we listen to women and we only look at evidence-based care. And MAPS is not evidence-based care. So I'm not sure if the committee members knows what MAPS is. Do you mind if I, so MAPS, and I don't remember what it's, maternity, antenatal, postnatal or something. So what it means is, and this is a solution to try and address workforce. So the way it works is a person comes in pregnant and they're allocated a midwife during pregnancy and they see that same midwife. And you heard from our speakers this morning just how important that is. So they see the same midwife and then it comes to labour and birth and that midwife is not there for her. But she does see, or they see that same midwife postnatally. We know, the World Health Organisation has a paper and I can also send this through, that most birth trauma happens 15 minutes before the baby's born. So MAPS is great to plug some holes or to put a Band-Aid over this huge issue of birth trauma. And how is it that we can- And how is it that we can have a midwife supporting a person in pregnancy and then postnatally but isn't actually there for, dare I say it, the main event? It seems illogical and you know, the physiology of birth means that you, your hormones are different in that space. Women should not be advocating for themselves in the birth room, they should just be focusing on just having a baby. So if a midwife isn't there with them, who knows them and trusts them and that person is in the unit for 12 hours or 18 hours or three hours and they have midwife shift changes and how is that, there is simply no evidence. I know that there is some research happening at the moment that's been commissioned by the Ministry for Health on this around looking at whether MAPS is a good model. From our experience and what we hear from community, a lot of the trauma happens during labour. So yeah, I hope that answered your question.
I have another question.
I think you're fine.
Okay. The, I suppose, following on from that again and acknowledging, so New South Wales in the hearing on Monday, the main reasons I think for moving to the MAPS model was around the difficulties with workforce, acknowledging that the midwifery workforce is, you know, predominantly women and women that have caring responsibilities, for example, and the on-call requirements of the MGP are such that that's not always a conducive model and may be difficult to fill. Do you have any recommendations other than that in terms of the provision of maternity care? Particularly to Illawarra Shalhavon.
Yeah, well I think it was highlighted on Monday, making it more accessible, so making, you know, a job share or a part-time rather than sticking specifically to a full-time caseload, making the teams work in a way where parents can, hey, I'll do this shift, that, I'll do this shift and make it more applicable to people who did have families. But we also need to make midwifery look more appealing and it's, there's only limited universities where you can study it, which makes it hard, particularly if you're in an area that doesn't have a university that can teach it. So it's not really something we've focused on making because we're focused on consumers. But I think from a consumer perspective, staffing comes up regularly and so that would be something that the local health district and universities probably need to focus on.
And we recently had a meeting with the local health district and we brought up this quite successful strategy of targeted advertising for MGP that proved in the past to have worked and gained interest from midwives. I think the question that we want to see answered is not just how to recruit midwives, how do we retain them? And we're also seeing student midwives through their midwifery degree, the attrition rate is pretty high. I'd be concerned if I was the head of midwifery, you know, studies in a university, why are the midwives leaving? Well, they're leaving and this is what we're here. So as consumers, midwives are also accessing better births because they're consumers, they're getting pregnant, they're having babies. We get messages all the time and we also have friends, you know, that's the thing about being a grassroots embedded in the community consumer group is you go down the street for a coffee, you bump into one of the hospital midwives or. So we want the focus on retention. We're hearing all the time, oh, there's a global crisis in midwifery shortage. We don't deny that and we don't disagree with that, we're not arguing that. But are we focusing on something where we could actually be retaining midwives? They're burnt out, I think Jess was saying, Carly was saying, there's not enough of them, but they're burnt out. And if they're seeing, you know, if one in three women are experiencing birth trauma and their workplace is full of trauma, why would you want to go back there? There's an expiry date on that. I'm not a midwife, but this is what we're hearing from our community. And that's not okay, we need to take care of midwives and doctors' mental health, we need to be supporting them. We need to be focusing on trauma-informed care for women and trauma support for that vicarious trauma that happens when you're witnessing trauma. If we don't address that, they're going to keep leaving in droves and then with 10 years' time, we're going to continue talking about midwifery shortage. I'm bored of that conversation, like we need to be smart, we need to be intuitive, we need to be really innovative and just actually go to, let's keep these student midwives going, they're learning one thing about physiological birth in their degree and then they're seeing huge rates of inductions and cesareans and lack of informed consent. Let's look at, like we want that looked at, we don't want our midwives to leave, we adore them, they are amazing.
One of the other feedback comments that we get quite regularly from midwives that are using us once they become a consumer or midwives who, you know, want to work with us, is that they don't actually get to operate in their full scope. So the midwifery scope actually covers a lot and they, once they work in that system, they're actually quite restricted on how much they can practise as a midwife. And so they might find that, yeah, there is a disconnect between what they learn in uni and then what actually happens inside the system. But it also becomes a challenge then to turn up and trust the skills that you have if someone's constantly telling you, you can't do that or you know, you're doing that wrong.
Thank you.
Yes, the Honourable Mark Benazian.
Thank you. Just picking up on some of the answers you've given to my colleague there, we're hearing a bit now about the people being risked out of the MGP. In your opinion, what you're hearing and also picking up on what you were just saying then about midwives not being able to practise their full scope, is this risk insurmountable in terms of some of these women that have been essentially kicked out of the program because of potential complications? Are they insurmountable or can we actually get creative, as you put it, to keep these women in MGP?
Needs to be redefined.
In terms of the risk?
Well, what is high risk? So for example, gestational diabetes is considered a high-risk presentation and it's not that women have, more women have gestational diabetes, it's that the measuring, the measure of it has changed, it has changed over time. So because it's changed and it's gone up, more women are in that little pool of GD, of gestational diabetes and they're offered an induction. So I think there has to be a redefinition of high risk. Interestingly, recently, I think it was earlier this year, maybe even a couple of months ago, and I can send this through as well, in the UK, they've gotten rid of the term high risk. It doesn't exist in the lexicon, there were about eight terms that were removed from maternity and high risk was one of them. Because as, you know, you saw Jess here, she was told she was high risk because she had high BMI, can't get in the pool, you can't do this. She had a home birth, average-sized baby with a private midwife. So I don't think it's insurmountable, I think it needs to be either completely removed, redefined and trust the midwives that they know how to support these women and actually give them autonomy around that. But our health system doesn't support that because medical obstetric care, so there's a hierarchy and the obstetricians have the last say and that's really, that's quite unique to Australia. So you've got obstetricians and then the midwifery, you know, midwifery care is underneath that, whereas everywhere else in the world, they're in partnership and they're working together and there's no hierarchy. So we're not trusting midwives enough that they can actually support all women to have physiological positive births.
And I think it's quite possible for midwives to look after high-risk women, like they know their limits and they know when to refer to an obstetric team. And so if you have a midwife caring or a midwife as part of a high-risk team, they're going to consult with an obstetrician when they need to and you still get that continuity of care. If it comes down to it where, you know, she can't see a midwife, she could at least see the same obstetrician the entire way through. We know that that continuity of care improves outcomes and you are increasing the risk for these women by putting them in fragmented care.
I think, yeah, that's an excellent point in terms of the trust in midwives expertise, I think we definitely need to do that. That's it, Chair.
Thank you. Dr. Amanda Combe.
Thanks. I wanted to ask about something that my colleague Sarah Mitchell touched on this morning, which is about sort of information provision during antenatal care and supporting people to make informed choice. We've heard lots of stories of, you know, emergency situations where people are suddenly recommended to have interventions during labour in a situation where it's impossible to explain all of the risks and benefits, people aren't really being given choice in those scenarios. It's obvious, I think, through the submissions that there's, that women want to have more information during their pregnancies about risks and benefits of various interventions. And so my question is, having spoken to and supported so many people, when do you think is the most opportune moment to do that or in what setting or with whom? How can we actually enable that sort of risk discussion to happen?
Yeah. Look, it probably comes down to staffing. We heard that one of the ladies had a three-minute appointment antenatally, what are you going to get across in that? Like you barely get basic observations done. And so you need to value antenatal care and there needs to be better protection around how many patients they're seeing in a day so that they can actually give adequate care. We often hear reports where people are sitting in antenatal clinic for hours on end, now keeping in mind they can't take their kids to those. And so they have a babysitter or someone looking after their kids if they have someone and then they wait. And so having access to good quality education will make a difference, but who's it coming from and what angle? Quite often we hear that it's one-sided and then they'll go and speak to a friend or a family member or they go into independent education and it's different. And so there is quite often a delay between research coming out and it actually filtering down into hospital policy, which means there's a difference between antenatal education and then what they're told at their appointments. And I think actually it can be done in the room. I've seen category one C-sections happen and that mum feel very supported and informed because the doctor sat next to her and said, hey, the team's going to do a lot of stuff, but I want to sit next to you and answer your questions. Because he, at that moment, trusted everybody else to do their job and his job was to care for the mum. So that mum actually left feeling like she had it all, had the information, had the surgery and then he came around the next day and said, midwives are going to give you pen and paper, write down all your questions, I'll come and sit with you again tomorrow and answer your questions. So I don't think everything has to be given to women in antenatal care because there is such thing as information overload, but it can be done better in the room as well.
Just to add to that, I heard on Monday as well, there was a lot of dialogue around the risks and benefits of things like instrumental deliveries, forceps, one-two's, vacuum and also things like induction. And that some birth trauma comes from not knowing that information about what that is, which I agree with. What I think is not happening in these antenatal conversations and one of the things that we have to talk about is the power in the room. So who has the power in the room? And we are a society that when we go to hospital, we really trust our doctors and we listen, we believe what they say and of course we do. And but so what we're here now doing is we're seeing a situation where women aren't trusted and it's very different going in pregnant to a hospital. There's nothing wrong with you, it's not a pathology, it's not like you're going to ED or you're going to get, you know, there's something wrong, like that's a pathology. Whereas when you're pregnant, you're just having a baby and but we're treating it like it's a pathology. And we need to do shared processing so the obstetrician has amazing expertise within their skill set. The midwife has a scope of practice, as Alyssa said, around what they can offer. And then the mother has her history and has created a birth plan, not because she wants to give birth in a yurt and howl at the moon, but it's because she's been educated and she has the knowledge to, that's what her birth plan is. She's gone away and taken responsibility for understanding what's going to happen and has put things down, that's what a birth plan is. And like some of the women said this morning, they had a birth plan but were really flexible within it. So what we're not hearing at these antenatal appointments is the discussion around induction? Great, what is it? What are the benefits? Are the risks explained that you could potentially, you know, have a postpartum hemorrhage? You know, there's a lot of research, I don't want to get dry academic because that's not. But are they being, is there a discussion around water immersion as one of the most effective pain relief factors or possibly, like, you know what I mean, in labour? Is that being discussed? We have an amazing birth, optimal birth environment in our local hospital and we have all of these things in place that could shorten labour, make it, you know, a manageable pain for the woman without the need for epidurals, without the need for inductions. We're not anti-intervention. I've had abdominal surgery, major abdominal surgery for my babies to be birthed. So we're not anti-intervention, but we are, we want people to have a spectrum of the information around interventions and how do you, you know, water births and props and active birth positions, because those things are proven to improve birth outcomes, shorten labours, that sort of thing.
There's also a disconnect, particularly at our local hospitals, we hear from consumers that they did have a chance to sit and go through birth plans in the antenatal period but then come time to labour or give birth, the birth unit staff, like you can't do that, you're too high-risk, you need constant monitoring, the monitor's not working, so you need to get out of the bath, the shower. So there's a real disconnect between what's being shared or spoken about in antenatal education or appointments and then what's actually happening inside the labour and birth units.
Thank you. The Honourable Susan Carter.
Thank you. My question really follows on from that of my colleague because we've heard a lot about the issue of consent and informed consent and women having the right information at the right time. And I'm interested in what you say that there's antenatal education, there's birth plans, but then that's not consistent with the presentation of the individual woman when it comes time to give birth. So do you have a view as to whether there should be a curriculum that everybody should have to work through or whether the information should be tailored to the particular woman? If it is tailored, when is the best time for that information to be given and who's the best person to be giving it? And then I suppose there's the other question, if you have a comment, there's a view that if you give women too much information about complications which may never occur, it may unduly worry them when it's not going to be their situation. How and when do we make sure that women have the right knowledge so that they can truly consent, I suppose, is the question.
I teach antenatal education, so I don't know, do you want to answer this first? Just don't want to be, give any sort of bias. But you, when you first go to your booking appointment at the hospital, which, you know, could be anywhere in your first or second trimester depending how busy they are, you're given a stack of paperwork introducing your dog, the New South Wales Health booklet, there's so much. And a large percentage of people I speak to have never looked at it. They feel so unwell, they just had this massive appointment, it gets buried and they move on. So I think giving women all that information at the beginning is, it's probably not going to get looked at, they're not thinking that far in advancing their pregnancy. But it needs to be done throughout, you can't just do one appointment and then go, yep, tick that box, done it all. It needs to be individualised care, you've got women's particular histories, they may have never given birth, they may have had loss, they may have cultural things that need to be taken into account. And so you can't, I don't think you can create a curriculum that will do a well enough job. I think you need to have conversations with individual women about what they want and how that looks for them. And that is the responsibility of the healthcare provider because they're the people that are having that care around them. And we know that that looks different for, you know, the examples, the women were private practising midwives, that was ongoing as things evolved through pregnancy. And so it needs to be the same side of the system where things will evolve, pregnancy changes and you need to be able to have that conversation multiple times relevant to your particular case.
And you touched on cultural concerns, so culturally and linguistically diverse communities need to be prioritised. Where, you know, what is the information in all the languages that is required? Our cultural, and it's not just about language, we're talking about health literacy as well and also taking into account where people have come from and what does the birth culture look like there as well? So it's, you know, it really is, so for some, you know, people, they want a room full, you know, having to support people just actually isn't culturally appropriate. They want their mother...
That's the current limit at our local hospital, to support people inside the bathroom.
It's a, it's continued on from lockdown, but so we really want to see a concerted effort, not just within our local health district, but better literacy for, you know, it has to go back to basics, better literacy for culturally, linguistically diverse communities as well. I think that ISU would probably have a really good response to that as well. Yeah.
So would you, I don't know, perhaps recommend a model where there was a separate, dedicated early appointment that actually addressed the individual needs of that woman? That wasn't wrapped up with observations but was sitting with her and talking with her in relation to the birth process and what she was likely to encounter?
That first appointment's pretty lengthy and they do do a lot of history and ask about family dynamics, mental health, history, all of that. Like, it is pretty detailed. I think they say to allow about an hour for that appointment. And so I think at that time, it's probably not the right approach, particularly if you're one of those women who feel awful during pregnancy and you're just struggling to get through the hour. I think it would be better just to have regularly throughout the entire pregnancy. Yeah.
And I think respecting that women seek their own information as well. Not all birthing parents do that, but there are some excellent resources out there. There's a really simple one that shares birth stories. And one of the things that we've lost in our society because we don't see it is, how does birth happen? What does it look like? And, you know, this podcast is literally just birth stories. So that's a form of education. Again, it's going back to this idea of creativity and we can't patronize women and say, you've done this birth plan because you were looking at social media or podcasts. Like, these are created by midwives. There are midwives, you know, creating these podcasts. They're amazing resources. And storytelling and just sharing a story about your feedback or sharing your story about your IVF journey or whatever it is, that's a form of education. So we can formalize it in the local health district. But I think it's really important to remember that communities are really stepping up to support women and birthing people, especially because of the state of affairs that we're in with birth trauma. Women and parents, dads are going to resources like, how do I avoid that? What, you know, how, what can I do in, within my power to empower myself, to raise awareness within my own? I don't know anything, I didn't know anything about birth, like, you know, as a first-time mum, I wasn't around friends who, you know, I was, I'd never seen a birth. So I had to access resources that I was comfortable with. So I think that's really, really important and better births run. So we have different ways that we engage with our community and one of them is through an active birth skills workshop. And we have people who are birthing in private with an obstetrician, home birth, you know, the whole range. And they're so appreciative of just being in a day workshop, learning about birth positions, and we talk about inductions and all of that. That's a real collaborative way of, but the local health districts certainly do have to create accessible, consistent resources with different channels, videos, you know, different languages, whatever, you know, it has to be diverse so that if you're unwell but you can listen to something, that's more effective than having a stack of papers in a folder to read through. It just, it's, yeah.
So in terms of recommendations, am I, can I summarize it in terms of that the initial appointment is not the best time to be providing information? Women need to be able to consent. So there should be a separate time after the first appointment before any, before birthing or any other procedures where information can be checked, information can be delivered that's tailored to that woman?
Yeah, yeah. I think I would also flip it back to clinicians. Because if women are going and seeking their own education, often that education is coming out of research papers and studies that have just been released. And if they then take that into the hospital and say, oh, I've just, I just heard about this, the hospital says, oh, that's, we don't know anything about it, or there's often a disconnect. And so clinicians need to be held to some sort of standard to make sure they're actually reading the research as it comes out and they're actually up to date with what the evidence is showing us.
Thank you. The Honourable Natasha McLaren-Jens.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you very much for coming today. I just wanted to ask a little bit about, under the MGP model, where do midwives operate from? Are they attached to the hospital or are they working from home? And then, and I suppose because it comes at, where you've sort of said in your submission, to expand the model, that's one of the things that have come back saying it's not possible because there's nowhere for them to operate from.
It's probably a question for the local health district. Do you want to take it?
Yeah, well, we don't have that information.
That's fine.
Yeah, and it changes and, you know, we know that some of the MGP midwives and then they're gone and so we don't, yeah, thank you.
I can ask when they'll come next year. The only other one is in relation to your submission where you actually talked about a trial that was done, I think it was M at, I don't know, it was in relation to budgets and costings. I was wondering if you had any more information. Happy for you to take it on notice, saying it was one of the barriers as to why you couldn't expand or they couldn't expand. I was just wondering if you had that in.
Or the Mango Trial?
Yeah.
So we...
Happy for you to take that on notice.
Thank you. Let's do that. Thank you.
Thank you both for coming today.
I've got a question.
I'll just a couple and then I'll move to you. That's fine. I just wanted to go back to some of the conversations we've already been having around MGP. And I know that you've been advocating for the expansion of this since 2016. I know we've talked about funding and obviously midwife shortages, but I'm just wondering what other sort of factors are at play here that's potentially stopping that program from being expanded?
The will to do it, the culture. We're so frustrated by this. We're given different answers. Often the common thread is midwife shortage, you know, workforce shortage. But in terms of the paper that we got commissioned, you know, for understanding how to create more sustainable models, one of the recommendations was, for example, to ensure that the leadership of or the management of MGP was by someone, you know, who was supportive of that model because that certainly has not been happening currently in the Wollongong, you know, in our region. So, yeah, certainly the will, the culture. And, you know, some of it is a mystery to us. So I think that would, we would really love to hear that expanded on this afternoon.
Thank you. And I know you mentioned earlier as well that you've been meeting with the LHD for seven years with little or no change. You know, what are your sort of highest priorities? What would you have hoped to have seen them doing? And what do you hope for action in regards to the future? You know, what are those top-line aspects that they should be actioning?
Yeah, we've had some wins. You know, the, it's like any partnership, we're under no illusion about how long it takes to create change. We know that, and even if in our own work, we've worked in big bureaucracies and stuff. So we understand that. We're not naive to the, all of the, you know, all of the moving parts. I think what we would like to see is, we don't want to be called into any more steering committees to talk about the same thing. We're, we've already laid our cards on the table, we've provided the evidence, we've really initiated those contacts with those academic researchers for the best evidence. So I think that we've done a really good job in our role as consumer advocates and probably above and beyond. So we really want to see action on this. We want to see a replication of what has worked. So the targeted, you know, advertising, we want to see the retention of midwives, we want to see the eight recommendations that came from that report in 2018. We want to see some movement on them. What a, what a waste of resources and time for a report to be created that's based on evidence. The will of the community, the demand from the community that they want this model, there's so much trauma. We get so many messages from women when we simply upload a photo of a beautiful birth through the MGP and what we get is, and we don't have the admin to manage it, the messages that come through saying, I applied as soon as I found out I was pregnant, I couldn't get on, and I know this is the best model of care. I applied like Olivia said before, but I was risked out at 32 weeks and now I can't even access a private practising midwife. So the, the demand is there from the community, the evidence is there. The partnership with the local health district is pretty rocky at the moment because I think seven years is a long time for there to be no action. And we want, we want more action, like we really do. And we want to hear from, if there's any other local health district where it is working, we want to know, how did they do that? Because I tell you, we've tried everything, we've thrown everything at this and it's disappointing.
It's also inconceivable to us that management didn't know that this much birth trauma was walking out of their hospital. Like, how do you, how do you work there and not, not know that that's what people are saying about your birth unit? We just, we don't understand. So a big culture change. We need to see something significant, particularly, yeah, in the local health district, right across New South Wales, obviously, we know it's a big problem. But as a local grassroots consumer advocacy group, we want to see what we've been asking for seven years, a culture shift, acknowledgement that MGP works and works in that it reduces the risk of trauma, but it also saves the, like, New South Wales Health money. It's a cheaper way to run. And like Shah said, we worked with academics, they wrote up reports, so acknowledging that those eight key points should be met.
And sorry, you mentioned the report and the eight recommendations. Is that the report that you mentioned in your submission that you couldn't get a copy of?
Yeah.
And have you got a copy of it yet?
No.
Okay, so that's not a public document at all? And you were just given the summary or something?
The recommendations, the barriers and recommendations. So, yeah, we can send that through.
Thank you. And you're saying that those eight recommendations, that there's been no movement since those recommendations were...
There's one that are partially complete.
There's one that's been partially complete.
Increase women's access by advertising on the hospital's website and in the community is partially complete.
Okay. Thank you. The Honourable Greg Donlan.
Happy to be here. I'm just aware of the secretary, I've got a copy of the New South Wales government report for our submission. Just got a copy of our report that I'd just like to take as your part for your comments. The document's titled, "New South Wales Health Submission Inquiry to Birth Trauma." Is that the document you've got?
Yes, that's the one, yep.
Could I please take you to page 11 and specifically the section headed 3.3, NSW Maternity Care Survey? Do you have it? Perhaps if, could I invite you to share the reading of that? I'd just like you both to just sort of read that little section and, I've just got a couple of questions.
That helps, Bill.
Mm-hmm. So the same one.
Sure. So this is a reference to a summary of a survey. This survey is conducted periodically by the Bureau of Health Information, which is not New South Wales Health, it stands as a body separate from and does independent research. So it's not beholden to New South Wales Health. And you can see it periodically does these studies. And the 2019 maternity survey care summary is there. What I've been a little bit challenged with from the evidence thus far to the inquiry, and I'll put this to you as a proposition to respond to, the headline figure there of, that says, and this is from the report, 94% of women rated their care during labour and birth as very good or good. And you can read the other figures if you wish. But that, that's a very high percentage figure. So what I'm sort of wrestling with, that clearly for a number of women, not a few, but a number of women, that certainly in regard to that specific question, a very high rating with respect to their birthing experience. So I'm wondering, given that, if that's accepted as a figure, and you might say, listen, that you don't like the survey methodology, that can't be right or something different. How do we push it higher, taking into account the range of issues and proposals that have been put place, or sorry, have been put forward to address the concerns? Because if you look at all the submissions, you look at all the oral evidence, now it's the second full day of oral evidence, there's a multitude of proposals that have been put to us very helpfully about improving the situation. But the question is, if that figure's correct, do all those things have to be done or are there within them some that need to be done definitely to improve that figure?
We know that there's one thing that needs to be done. And the most protective factor to reduce birth trauma is to fund midwifery-led continuity of care models. It's not a silver bullet, you heard from Amanda earlier this morning, that she did not have a good experience in the MGP model. I didn't have a good experience in the MGP model. I chose a private midwife. So we're not saying that, you know, it's, it's perfect because there are human factors. But we know that the most protective factor to reduce birth trauma or the protective solution is that model of care. And it has to be publicly funded because not everyone can afford thousands of dollars for private midwifery care, especially, you know, the Wollongong LGA is one of eight places in Australia that accepts humanitarian refugees with the women-at-risk status. So these are women who come here on their own from either places where it's war-torn or oppressive regimes. They come here and they're birthing in our hospitals here. They're not going to be able to afford midwifery, private midwifery care. But if you can think of, like, the most vulnerable person in the room, if you're coming with lots of trauma, and I also want to respectfully include First Nations women of this country, if we include the most oppressed, you know, vulnerable, strong but vulnerable people, they need that care. So in response to this, and we do question, like, we do have questions about the methodologies, I won't, you asked me not to, you know...
Oh, no, no, listen, if you do have any, if you'd like to comment, I'm trying to close that...
Okay. Like, I, you know, I looked at that and I was like, I'd love that, I, I hope that's really true.
The link, the link is there.
Sure.
We had it, we had a look at it.
Yeah, so we, you know, we were wondering, like, how is that, how is the survey offered? Who responds? So what's the demographics? Is it being offered to culturally, linguistically diverse women, for example?
The timing's odd, eight weeks postpartum. Most support people have gone back to work, you're at home with a newborn baby and at eight weeks, there's a lot happening, so that's unique.
Yeah. So it's like anything, when we look at research, we really, methodology is absolutely key. So if, if, I, I just, when I read that, I'm in heaven if I see, like, these 94% of women, if they're happy with... if they're happy with their care.
That's what I'm trying to reconcile.
Sure.
In my mind.
Yeah.
And it may not be reconciled even by the end of the inquiry, but putting that aside, I might be just slow on the uptake. The key is, it seems to me, that of all the things that have been proposed by the people on the ground, speak, like yourselves.
Yep.
Others that are doing this work and are very alive too, hazardous, there's been so many, what is the distillation of those down to the much critical ones?
Yes.
I think the consistent message through Monday and today has been continuity of care.
Absolutely.
It's not a hard reach. You just want to see the same face the whole time.
Yep.
And I think whether you get that from a private practising midwife, midwifery group practice, antinatal clinic, birth unit, postpartum care, or a private obstetrician, the positive stories are coming out of continuity of care.
Yeah.
And if you choose to see a private obstetrician and get your continuity that way, great. Have a standard where they're going to be there the whole time. If you choose to go through your local hospital because you can't financially output thousands of dollars for a midwife and a doula, then you should be able to access the same face and not have to tell your story over and over, particularly if there's a history of trauma. You're re-traumatising women by making them go over their notes because you didn't have five minutes to sit down and read it and you don't know her.
All the consistent messaging is continuity of care. And the gold standard is midwifery-led continuity of care. I took a clip of it and say, "midwifery-supported" because the person that needs to be leading this is the woman. So everybody should be taking her lead and bringing in your skill set, midwife skill set, obstetrician's skill set, when they're needed. I think we're wasting a lot of obstetricians' time. They've got a particular skill set and then, you know, the scope of practice is really clear, like, if we want to ensure that women and babies come out of their birth healthy, well, mentally and physically, then the gold standard is midwifery-led continuity of care. I like to do things in threes, so the second thing that I would offer to this is trauma-informed training to all clinicians across the local health districts and that it be mandatory and that it be really well set up because we, you know, that if you've got a woman who's already birthed, she's had a cesarean, that the most contributing factor to a C-section is having a previous C-section because of, you know, there's a lot of trauma there. So trauma-informed care. And the third thing that I would say is, in the same way that Queensland has legislated informed consent, we need to do that in New South Wales because informed consent is not happening. No means no. Like, that, if, and even if someone doesn't know all of the policies, if she says no or if they say no, and you've got a different opinion because you're a clinician, it actually, like, they are a grown adult, they've just grown a baby, that's okay for them to say no. And we all want a healthy baby when we come out. That is the baseline, that's the benchmark. And it's actually a little bit insulting to say to a woman, "We just want you to have a healthy baby." Because guess what? She doesn't even think about that because that's a given. She wants that, but she wants, she knows that what her baby needs is also an opportunity to have the best start in life. And if they're starting with a mother who's traumatised, the research that I mentioned before around infant-mother bonding, that's going to get, you know, we're going down a pretty, it's not a good road. So trauma-informed care, midwifery-led continuity of care and legislation for informed consent. I mean, I can give you a list of ten and I will send that through to you in an email.
Thank you. We have run out of time, but that was a really strong closer, so thank you for that. And thank you again for attending today and providing your evidence. The committee may have additional questions for you after the hearing and we've resolved that the answers to these, along with any questions that were taken on notice, be returned within 21 days and the secretary will be in contact you in regards to those questions. Thank you both again, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. I now welcome our next witness, Ms Fiona Reed, who's a clinical midwife consultant. Before I begin this session, I remind the witness to avoid referring to specific names, hospitals or medical facilities in their evidence and to speak generally about the issues raised in the terms of reference. Could I ask you now to please state your name and position title and swear either an oath or an affirmation?
My name is Fiona Reed. I am a consultant midwife currently working clinically. And was there another thing?
Just swearing an oath or an affirmation?
Yes, and I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you. Do you have a short opening statement you'd like to start with?
I do.
Great, thank you.
I've been a clinical midwife for 36 years in every sphere of clinical practice, including Australian and international practice, rural, remote and urban settings, in midwifery models of care in public hospitals, birth centres, home birth, MGP and First Nations birthing on country. I've also taught midwifery in three major universities and in 2017 I established a formal birth debriefing clinic at Wollongong Hospital, where as part of my role as a clinical midwife consultant, I provided formal birth debriefing for 563 women over a four-and-a-half-year period. And this is what I've learnt and I thank you for the opportunity to speak today. This inquiry has been an important lifting of the veil that has been disguising birth trauma and obscuring it from view as a serious risk to mothers and babies in our maternity care system. We are now acknowledging that birth trauma is an experience of so many women that it is a foreseeable experience and because we know that we have a responsibility to address the underlying risks and consequences of care management that are creating it. We know that the more interventions introduced antinataally and used at the time of labour and birth, the higher the risk of a traumatic birth experience. Trauma changes the mother's brain and interferes with her ability to recover both physically and psychologically from birth, often resulting in birth injury. It disturbs her ability to connect with her new baby. We are now at a time in maternity care where more interventions are more frequently used than ever before. The hospital system has embedded medical management into every aspect of maternity care. Having a baby cannot easily be distinguished from having medical investigations in preparation for surgery. There is an historical and current investment in increasing medicalised maternity care, which preferences high rates of antinatal and intrapartum interventions. Interventions directly correlate with birth trauma. Interventions have become standardised processes for the management of pregnancy, labour and birth, and are the opposite of individualised care. But medical and surgical management have a high tolerance for distress and women and babies don't. Our hospitals individuate birth trauma and identifies the trauma as that woman's experience instead of taking a systems approach and reviewing and addressing the care and the management that is contributing or causing trauma to many, many women. A failure to address escalating interventions without a proven benefit to maternal and infant outcomes and a failure to offer trauma-informed care debriefing to women in the postnatal period is a system that communicates either that her experience isn't important to the care providers or that the system doesn't care that having her baby has left her broken and has contributed to an experience of trauma, not joy, not happiness, not the satisfaction that she and her infant have survived, just a feeling that she or her infant or sometimes both of them nearly didn't. It's an act of erasure to be told that the only important part of the birth experience is the end, the live baby and the live mother. "I have a live baby, so I wasn't harmed." We know that this is an inadequate measure of outcome. A traumatic birth experience resulting in physical injury and/or psychological harm, prolonged physical pain and psychological suffering, an inability to care for and connect with her baby and feelings of failure, isolation, guilt, shame, anger, neglect will mean that women begin to experience a disconnect from their lives and a descent into a darkness that doesn't lift. Women have been silently screaming for a decade and now they can be heard. The Murdoch Institute, Panda and James Cook Unit have recently released research into the causes of maternal suicide, the leading cause of maternal death in perinatal period. They found that after giving birth, women who had repeated suicidal thoughts had feelings of being violated and shamed by the birth. They experienced psychological isolation resulting in disconnection from themselves, their experience and their baby. That during the birth, they had received disrespectful care and care lacking in compassion, which created feelings of being defective and contributed to them feeling like defective mothers. Our system, the methods and communication at the time of birth, and yes, some of our clinicians are causing harm to mothers. To address this, Australian maternity care needs to be reviewed. But birth trauma is not only affecting the woman and babies in our care, it is affecting us, the clinicians. The clinicians are the second victims of birth trauma. The repeated exposure to trauma, the disempowerment of the midwife in the clinical environment that supports unequal power structures and medical dominance, the experience of being complicit in trauma-causing care and the inability to have a validated professional autonomy when caring for women in the system is degrading the midwifery workforce. This effect, the effects of contributing and witnessing repeated trauma affects our clinicians' brains and the recurrent triggering of their own trauma experiences accumulated during their working life creates a compassion deficit associated with their need to repeatedly survive shifts where the workload is too heavy and the staffing is too under-skilled. The repeated stimulation of the sympathetic nervous system and the requirement to comply with duties and procedures and policies protective of interventions that increase the likelihood of trauma or will result in injury reduces a clinician's ability to think, listen, ask questions, feel, express compassion, be authentic or advocate and remain woman-centred. In the long term, a serious overhaul of the use of interventions at the time of birth and a major restructuring of maternity care that is less hierarchical and more inclusive is required, but it is my opinion there are seven necessary improvements to maternity care that should be acted upon urgently in order to address the harm being done to mothers and their babies. One, research has shown that midwifery continuity of care improves maternal and infant outcomes and reduces all physical and psychological harm. MGP needs to be the dominant form of maternity care in all hospitals and access to private midwifery care must be supported. Two, all women having their first baby must have one-to-one midwifery intrapartum care in hospital. Three, all clinicians need to be trained in trauma-informed care and all hospitals need an accreditation system imposed on them to ensure that a standard of trauma-informed care is met and not just talked about. Four, a validated screening tool to identify previous trauma needs to be introduced in the antinatal period to identify women who need support re-entering the system and who are at risk due to previous harm. Five, women identified as at risk for birth trauma need to be offered antinatal care that is intelligent to their needs for planning, control and improved care that reduces all risks of repeated trauma. Six, all maternity hospitals need to initiate formal debriefing clinics with appropriately-trained trauma-informed care staff and women must have access to self-referral for formal debriefing in an established birth debriefing clinic, which needs to be offered to women who meet a consumer-led criteria for birth trauma. Seven, and finally, all clinicians involved in clinical care that meets an established criteria for traumatic must be formally debriefed within 48 hours of the incident or birth. Appropriate clinical debriefing and regular clinical supervision has the capacity to reduce the effects of accumulative trauma and to turn clinical desensitisation around and support clinicians to regain compassion and empathy in their work with women and people in their care and also with each other.
Thank you. Thank you. The committee actually resolved that we would do some brief, low questions, so we'll be calling out questions as we go through, but I'm going to go to the deputy chair, the honourable Susan Carter.
Thank you, Chair, thank you, Ms Reed. I wonder if I could ask you some questions in relation to your experience running the debriefing clinic at Wollongong and your recommendations around that. I'm interested by your suggestion of the 48-hour debrief or within the 48 hours in the light of evidence that we heard this morning that perhaps it's too soon or perhaps people haven't actually processed it enough. And I wondered when the, I guess, in the ordinary course of business, the debriefing happened in your debriefing clinic and whether, in the cases of known trauma, whether the one 48-hour touch base was enough or whether you would recommend further debriefs after that?
Just to clarify, I was speaking about clinician debriefing in 48 hours, so clinical...
Sorry, what, in what way is the clinician debriefing different to what you're talking about in the debriefing?
So debriefing for clients or women is, I mean, the research around debriefing generally internationally is very confusing and there is no gold standard because it's done so differently in, all over the world. But we do know from good neuroscience that the brain is too disrupted within the early days, hours, weeks. The frontal lobe is still recovering from an assault of adrenaline and cortisol. So immediate debriefing following a traumatic birth for a woman involved in the birth needs to be done once the brain has had a chance to calm down, resolve, perhaps absorb a little more dopamine, some oxytocin. However, for clinicians, they are on shift, they are exposed to a very traumatic birth or a birth where they feel they have been complicit.
Sorry, excuse me, so you're saying the clinician should debrief 48 hours, not the woman?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, that may not have been clear.
And in the debriefing clinic that you were running...
No, that was for clients, for women.
At what time did that debrief occur?
So if a woman was referred to, just to complete about clinician debriefing, because clinicians come back on to shift anywhere from eight, 12, 24 hours later if they're working regular shifts, it's very important to debrief a birth before they are then put back into the clinical situation in a timely manner. So 48 hours allows for shift change, a day off to come back. So for women having accessing formal birth debrief...
So, for women having, accessing formal birth debriefing, as a result of my studies, I resolved that it would be inappropriate to offer formal debriefing to women under 12 weeks postnatally. A lot of women I saw, I was seeing six months to two years after the birth of their baby.
And was that the first time that they'd had an opportunity to debrief?
Yes, it was.
Is that perhaps too late in your experience? Because it gives some time, unsupported time, when you haven't been able to work through issues with someone?
Well, it's a very good question, actually, because, as you can appreciate, women's drive to survive and to make their infant survive consumes their postnatal period. A lot of women whose brains and bodies are injured as a result of birth trauma will still enact the mothering role while they are internally completely disrupted. So, for some women, they will not only feed the baby, look after other children, engage back in their intimate relationships, relationships with friends, families, they'll still do Christmas lunch, they'll still go out to functions, they will return to work, but on the inside, they are just barely coping, hence the high suicide rate.
Which is, I suppose, why I'm asking, what would be the optimal time when women were first provided with that opportunity to debrief?
We don't know. We do not know. What we do know is that it's very important that it's available for women to access when they feel ready, because as you can appreciate, the re-traumatizing effect of retelling a story and their experience, delving back into the experience, the function of the brain is to trigger women to alert them to survive again, the memory, the flashbacks, these sorts of things that are disrupting their daily life. Women have to feel ready to re-engage with the system. It's not ideal to hold a formal debriefing clinic within the hospital, because re-entering the hospital itself is a triggering event.
So, your clinic was self-referral rather than women being recommended at six weeks, at eight weeks, at 10 weeks?
No, my clinic started with referral from the antenatal clinic, largely from midwives, then also from doctors, then from postnatal midwives, then from GPs, then psychologists, then child and family workers, then psychiatrists, then social workers, then physiotherapists, and finally, women started ringing the hospital and referring themselves.
So, if we were looking to make recommendations, for example, that all women should have the opportunity to debrief every birth between six weeks and 12 weeks or later as needed, would that be?
I don't think every woman needs to debrief a birth. I think there are women, as we know, leaving our system, approximately 30%, who, in order to regain an ability to manage their life and engage with their baby, they need to understand what happened and why it happened, and is she at risk of that ever happening again? And for those women, a well-advertised formal debriefing clinic set up in every public hospital would allow women to engage with it when they felt ready.
I suppose my concern is that, given the figures that you gave us about suicide and maternal mortality, if we are leaving women unsupported and saying, "It's here when you're ready," without any structure around that, and without any signpost around that, are we actually leaving women unsupported who follow other paths rather than find their way to a debriefing clinic?
So, I think the advertisement, the establishment of formal debriefing clinic should be well-advertised within the maternity unit, but I think parking the ambulance at the bottom of the cliff is an area that's commonly made in health. We need to prevent birth trauma, not prevent suicide.
I'd like to think that we were working on both at the moment, before we get to a stage where there is no birth trauma, and so that's why I'm interested in this debriefing.
I don't think we'll ever eliminate birth trauma, it's an impossible request. Birth is, on occasion, traumatic, and certainly, our attention to those unpreventable incidences of birth trauma is very important. What I would like to draw attention to is the responsibility to prevent preventable birth trauma.
But in terms of the debriefing clinic, you're not suggesting that be available as part of general postpartum care?
I'm not sure that's an achievable resource. I think if hospitals were to set up formal debriefing, birth debriefing clinics, and they had dedicated staff, and the clinic was run to accommodate a proportion, 30% of the known births in any given year, it would be quickly uptaken by women who wanted to debrief. There is a percentage of women who never want to talk about their birth again, or they want to talk about their birth 10 years down the track. I think part of the problem with top-down medical servicing is that when we require women to do anything, we're not going to achieve the result we want, which is self-determining healthcare and a provision of appropriate support that women access when they are ready and when they want to.
Okay, thank you.
Dr Amanda Con.
I have two questions.
Absolutely.
The first one's also about the debriefing clinic, and we've had a number of submissions from people across the state have told stories where the inability to debrief was, was an exacerbating factor in their trauma. So, I was particularly interested to hear about your formal birth debriefing clinic as, as part of the solution. So, my first question is just, just about the practicalities of the clinic. How is it staffed? How is it funded? Who's actually providing the clinical service? What are the skills of those people? Could you just explain to us how it works?
Yes, lovely. I was very fortunate to be working in an organisation that valued the innovation of a formal birth debriefing clinic, and so I was supported as part of my role. I had a very big job, but part of my role and part of what I saw was extremely necessary as part of that role was to provide debriefing. I became increasingly aware of the number of women who were re-entering the system, or who were refusing to re-enter the system, or were having difficulty re-entering the system, absolutely terrified about what would happen, and they had no one to guide them through the system and to ensure that they had appropriate support to negotiate what would happen in their pregnancy and at the time of labour and birth. We know that women who have experienced birth trauma subsequently have a higher rate of terminations of pregnancy, have a higher rate of permanent contraception, have a higher rate of miscarriage, of preterm birth, they have a higher rate of late booking antinatally, refusal of care and management, declining care and management investigations, and can have a higher rate of repeated poor outcomes for both the mother and the baby. So, for women to re-engage with the service, that became a kind of very big motivator for me to help them navigate a way back into the service and to afford them some sort of support while they were pregnant, and then at the time of labour and birth. Sorry, it's a long answer. So, we, I established the clinic, and women were referred. I would ring them and ask, establish what, what they wanted. They would be referred, or they would contact the hospital. And I would ring them and then make an appointment. If they were from out of area, I would ask them to get their notes, their partogram, which is the record of labour, and operation report if they'd had surgery, and to bring a copy of those notes with them to the appointment. If they were from within the system, I would access that, that material with their consent, and then I would read everything associated with the birth. When they came in, we would try and keep waiting times for the appointment to a minimum, and ultimately, we tried to move the clinic to an area that wasn't located in the antenatal or the postnatal unit because of the distress that re-entering would cause. We tried to not make them wait in the waiting room for any period of time. The admin staff were unbelievably supportive. They would let me know as soon as the woman arrived, and we would usher her into a private room. The room would be set up in a non-confrontative way, and I would have a doll in pelvis, because I'm physiologically birth-trained, so describing, manipulating the baby through the pelvis, talking about her progress of labour was very much a frequent facet of the interview. The, the interview would start just quietly. "I've read all the, all your material, would you like to tell me your story?" So, part of the problem with debriefing, again, the top-down model, is that as clinicians, we tend to tell women. This was the reverse of that, where the woman gets to tell someone in an uninterrupted way. So, a quiet room, privacy guaranteed, she speaks for as long as she likes to. I would advise her that I would make some notes while she's speaking. It's not that I'm inattentive, it's that there are things that I need to remember, so I'm just going to make a couple of notes while she's speaking. And then she speaks until she's said everything she wants to say. Then, because I've already read the information prior to her appointment, I have an idea in my head of what the issues may have been. Sometimes they were correct, sometimes they weren't, sometimes I was surprised. Then we go back, "What questions would you like answered?" When I made the initial phone call for the appointment, I would always ask them to think about what they wanted from the appointment, and actually to write it down. And then because the appointments were made a month out, I would ask the woman to keep a list on the kitchen bench where she just made notations about things, because once she knew the appointment was made and she was going to be talking about her experience, things would bubble up. So, I would ask her to capture those by keeping a list. Quite often, women didn't bring a list, they knew.